Councillor McIntosh and Councillor Capes. And Councillor Davie is joining us online. And Deputy Mayor Nix has given notice due to a personal matter. So today's meeting is divided into two parts. The first part is the presentation by the OPP and discussion about road safety in the town of Mono. And the second part is going to be an open mic, at which I encourage everyone to ask a wide variety of succinct questions. But before we start, I'm going to call on Councillor Capes to do the land acknowledgement.
Thank you. We would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging that the town of Mono resides within the traditional territory and ancestral lands of the Teanatate, Adewandran, Hodnashoni, and Ashnabe peoples. We also acknowledge that the town of Mono resides within the treaty lands named under Treaty 18, the Natauasaga Purchase of 1818. These traditional territories upon which we live and learn are steeped in rich indigenous history and traditions. It is with this statement that we declare to honour and respect the past and present connection of indigenous peoples with this land, its waterways, and resources.
Thank you. Before I call on our OPP contingent to make their presentation, I'd like to indicate a little bit about Mono's history of advocacy when it comes to road safety. When I rejoined council in 2019, I convinced the council of the day to form a community safety task force, which we did. I see Dell is in the audience. He was one of the citizen members, but it consisted of citizen members, members of council. And we held one very successful public meeting on August 20th of that year. The task force resulted in 19 recommendations being made. Some were outside our purview, and they were directed to the province of Ontario, while there were other ones which we actually could take action on, including increasing our enforcement supplement. We've had a history, again, in the town of having a supplement for an additional officer over and above the basic OPP contract. And I see Larry Matkowski is here today, and he has been our eyes, ears, and wonderful, tireless enforcer of traffic rules and laws in Mono for some time. But we added to his basic supplement. We also invested in some rubberized road impediments, shall we say, that we move around the town. And I think some of your neighbourhoods have experienced the road bumps to try and calm traffic. And we then also launched a series of letters to the Minister of Transportation, the Attorney General, the Premier, advocating for recommendations contained within that task force report. The list is long, frankly, and I can't claim great success in getting the province's attention on some of these things, but we're persistent. We don't give up. And most recently, I convinced council to pass a motion declaring a road safety emergency in Mono and urging the province to recognise that. That motion, which was very detailed, and I'll tell you where you can actually read it, was also circulated to every municipality in Ontario. And I'm happy and proud to say that some 20 municipalities have endorsed that motion. Now, some people say, well, you know, climate emergencies, road safety emergencies, what isn't an emergency these days? And I think we chose the term "emergency" to highlight the importance of the province taking some action in the area of automated speed enforcement, in the area of reviewing antiquated Highway Traffic Act fines. We also advocated for a public safety campaign. And I can't remember the last PSA I've seen from the province of Ontario on road safety. I threw a little spanner into the works by suggesting how they could pay for that. I didn't want them coming back and saying that, "Well, we don't have any money." So I suggested that maybe they take a look at a portion of the monies that are spent on promoting lotteries in this province by the Ontario Lottery Corporation. You're all familiar with those lottery ads if you watch City TV or other outlets. I filed a Freedom of Information application, and lo and behold, I got an answer. Over $200 million a year in advertising lotteries in the province of Ontario. We could take a small fraction of that and deploy it towards road safety campaign. That's all I'm asking. So we have outstanding letters to the Minister of Transportation. We have one specifically on the issue of Highway 10 and whether or not as part of MTO's study of Highway 10, do they plan to do traffic monitoring through so-called black cat technology? In other words, see what kind of speeding is occurring? I do not have an answer back from the Minister. I do, however, have a meeting coming up on the 6th of May with the Minister. It's been cancelled twice, but I'm assured that it is going to go ahead, and we'll see what transpires from that. So that's a little bit about our advocacy. And as I say, we don't give up. I don't give up. And at this time, I'd like to recognise the presence of a number of members of the OPP who are giving us time today that they hopefully will get back in terms of the kinds of comments and input that you provide, specifically Michael De Pasquale, who is the inspector and detachment commander. We also have Teriann Penkarina, who is with Mike, Sergeant John Bulligan, and, as I've already mentioned, Larry Matkowski. So I'm going to turn the meeting over to them. We'll see a presentation, then I'm going to open it up to the floor to ask questions and make points for the benefit of our police enforcement. Would you like us to just stand here? I'm sorry, we're going to be standing in front of the door over there. I think we should probably get the mic, and it needs to be turned on, I believe.
It's working. So, good morning. Thank you, your worship, and thank you, everyone, for coming. My name is Mike De Pasquale. I'm excited to be here. I am the detachment commander of Dufferin OPP, and I've been here for six months. I have just over 21 years on the job with the OPP, all with the OPP. And my traffic background, I feel, serves the county quite well. I spent most of my time in traffic enforcement and traffic safety, but I did start my career with the Natauasaga detachment. And I've been a little everywhere in between. Just would like to introduce Staff Sergeant John Bulligan. He's one of your two detachment managers. And Sergeant Teriann Penkarina, and of course, Constable Larry Matkowski. And so we are here to talk about traffic safety or anything that you would like to talk to us about. I'll start off by saying that we've got 12 provincial traffic initiatives this year. Three of them are coming up during the month of May, so it's County Road Safety Week, Motorcycle Safety Awareness Week, and the Victoria Day Long Weekend. We are constantly looking at our data, whether it's through traffic complaints, motor vehicle collisions, impaired drivers, and we are strategically putting our officers at the right places at the right times and giving them the equipment and the training so that they can be successful in doing their jobs: enforcement, education, and public engagement. We can't do this alone. Like anything else, we need the community's support. And we're so grateful for the support that the entire county provides, particularly the people of Mono. So we are also committed to ensuring that our officers are trained, as I had mentioned, in using those traffic devices and that they maintain those qualifications. And we also have the partnership of the Central Region Traffic Incident Management Officers that assist us, whether it's through doing road safety initiatives like commercial motor vehicles or those towards the big four: so impaired driving, aggressive driving, distracted driving, and seatbelt or not using occupant restraints properly. Beyond that, that's all I have got, unless there's any questions specific of me. I'm just going to hand over the mic to Staff Sergeant Bulligan to talk about traffic safety, maybe from his perspective.
Yeah, so just as an operations manager, so the other operations manager is Corey Trortha, and our job is to work with the traffic officers. And if there's an issue, identifying how we address the issue. So typically, what that involves is what we call a focus patrol. So if there is a traffic complaint, whether we get it through the Police Service Board or however else, we try to identify how we're going to address that issue. And sometimes, that may just involve putting a cruiser there to see if, in fact, there is an issue. But what we also like to do is, while it is complaint-driven, it is also analytics-driven, what the actual issues are. So, you know, while we do want to address every sort of one-off complaint, we do look at analytics of where the hotspots are and engage our traffic unit there by creating what's called, like I said, a focus patrol. And focus patrols generally, it involves basically what it sounds like, a focus patrol. So officers are assigned to sit or to be mobile in a certain location for a short, when I say a short period of time, generally two weeks. So it's concentrated because then we have to move on to the next complaint area. But again, we really sort of triage those complaints that, you know, while you have, you know, you may see a speeder on your road, the amount of time, we have to be mindful of how much time we spend on every complaint and what the actual issues are, i.e. accidents. So a great example, last year, we initiated Safe on 10, which was a great traffic initiative that we engaged Gray County and Calladen OPP on, had our aviation unit. So we could bring in those resources for those real big sort of hotspots, i.e. Highway 10, which was a great initiative. I forget how many charges, but we even seized a handgun, cocaine, stuff like that. So, yeah, that's from my perspective. Any questions for me? No? Good? Okay. No, I'm just kidding. Larry Nix, he's really the guy to speak to it.
I just want to start by saying, have I given anybody a ticket here? Because if I have, I'm not going to be responsible for it. I started here in 2000, fall of 2011. I retired from Toronto Police and I came here. It's an awesome place to work, and people are great. But having said that, it's changed a lot in the 11 or 12 years I've been here. As we know, people can't afford to live in the city, so they're driving further and further to work. The bulk of the enforcement that I do is the commuters. I mean, it's not the people that live here. Everybody knows where I sit, maybe sleep the odd time, but everybody knows that. So it's the commuters. But it always amazes me, yesterday, for example, a guy's going up Highway 10 at 144, and he's under two driving suspensions. And I said to him, you know, if you wouldn't have went by here at 85 or 90, I would have looked at you, not even looked twice. But people are in a hurry. People have to go so far nowadays, and I'm sure that's a whole nother issue we can discuss. But, no, it's, airport roads and Hawkeley are the main priorities. We can talk about the motorcycles, that's another issue, but as you may or may not know, we can't pursue these bikes. So it's very, very hard to enforce the motorcycles. But we do what we can do. And please, call in if you have any problems, any concerns, any complaints. I do the best I can, but it's tough because there's a lot of roads to go through. Any questions from anyone? Anyone have any complaints? Please.
If you can't press some advice, can you just save your questions until after your presentation?
Okay.
Sorry, John, but I'm going to turn down an inch.
Sorry. No. Now, having said that, just on that topic, so people use their GPS all the time, obviously, and you're getting, not that it's in Mono, but County 11, Mono Amrits Town Line, even the blind line now, especially when there's construction on Highway 10, they're non-stop traffic. And again, Mono Amrits Town Line, I've got them at 140s, 150s there, because that's their shortcut now. And when they were dirt roads when I was a kid, you didn't have that. But now, it's becoming a big problem. So I spend a lot of time on all the roads and do the best I can with what we've got. Now, we have a number of radar units that we use. People coming towards you, people going away, people coming up behind you. We have a laser that, I'm qualified to use that for stationary. So, like I said, we do the best we can with what we got, but I'm only one guy, so... That's about my part of it.
Only one guy on the enhancement, but also bear in mind that, you know, our officers are assigned working regular patrol to do traffic enforcement also. He's that enhancement to it.
I don't know where Andrew is, but if Andrew could maybe start my presentation, I'll just start by introducing myself. I'm Teriann Penkarina. I'm so happy to be here, and I think it's amazing what a turnout there is here. It just speaks volumes to the town of Mono, so we're very pleased to be here. I have the pleasure of being attached to the Community Response Unit. This is where my passion lies, that is all community outreach, and I get to lead an absolutely amazing team. So I thought this might be a great place to show you, as the OPP has come in, some of the programs that we've taken on. I was former Orangeville Police myself, so I'm able to sort of see the changes and the progression that's happened here. And it's very, if you can't tell, I get pretty excited about it all. We didn't have these things available to us, so if we could just start my first slide. I don't know where Andrew is. I don't know where... So we have Community Watch, which is different than a neighbourhood watch, and this is something that we will go out to... Is Kathy in here? Where's Kathy? Hi, Kathy. So Kathy knows all about this program. This is something that we work in partnership, police and communities in your neighbourhood, if you have concerns. It's similar to what a neighbourhood watch would have been. We've just sort of taken it to a new level. We come out, we deliver different presentations to you, we address any concerns you might have, make recommendations, and it's really just this nice flow of information to help your neighbourhood feel a little bit safer. And we share a lot of information with these neighbourhoods. I have, I also run the media team, so if we have media releases that might affect your particular neighbourhood, then we would make sure that we sent those to you so you could read them. Next slide, please. So Project Safe Trade, this is something that we got a couple of years ago, and this is a place that allows you to sort of, to help combat the issues that we have when we buy things off Facebook Marketplace, Kijiji, we're all familiar with some of those sad stories that happen. This really helps deter fraud. When you say, "Let's meet at the police station," it deters a lot of people. And we're very happy. I've had where people might be exchanging something that they're worried about, where they've asked the officer to come and step outside and just stand by while they exchange the money and the item. So we're happy to do that as well. So that is something that you can keep in the back of your mind, that you can use the Orangeville detachment for that. Next slide, please. So Safeguard, this is wonderful. We use this, actually, if you remember the dealerships along Highway 9, we had some issues there with auto theft, and our team went out and met with some of the management teams over there. This is great, and this works for your business or your home. And it's really us coming out, we take an assessment of your property, again, whether it is your residential home or business, and we just make recommendations to you. We might look at, like, the outside of your home, things that we might want to trim back, trees or bushes, cameras, we make different recommendations. So this is, this is great if you've had, if you've had your home or business broken into. It is an absolutely horrible feeling. So this is a nice way to just sort of prevent that from happening again. Next slide, please. CamSafe, this is new to Dufferin. This is really neat. This is very much, if you picture a registry of a database of the cameras out here. So if you have a camera on your home or business, you would register that you have it. What this is not is the OPP playing Big Brother and watching everything that you do. We're not doing that. I don't care if you have the second glass of wine at home. It's totally fine. I'm doing it, too. This is very much for us if we have something big that happens in your neighbourhood and that we can access. Okay, so here's all the cameras, and now we can canvas your home and say, "Would you mind checking your video from this time period?" We can perhaps look for a suspicious vehicle or something like that. So this is amazing. We're really trying to push this out, so you may see flyers or you may see our media releases. We're attending lots of businesses, just trying to canvas for more people to register for this. So if you're interested, please see me after the presentation. Next slide, please. Project Lifesaver, this is so near and dear to my heart. If you have a loved one with dementia or Alzheimer's, this is for you. Anyone that is prone to wandering could also be a child with autism. This is basically a tracking device. We have partnered with our Lions Club, they funded the entire project for us. Meals on Wheels, they are our registers, so they are the ones that will come out and get you registered. And essentially, our loved one wears a briefcase where we are able to track them. So we have several officers trained to use this equipment, including myself. So we ask that if you have your loved one signed up, the idea is that the second that they disappear from you, you call us, because, I mean, time is everything in these circumstances. So very, very happy about this. And again, if this was something that interests you, please see me after, and I will get you in touch with the right people. Can I have the next slide, please? Lock it or lose it, you'll see people, our auxiliaries do this a lot for us. We have the best auxiliary officers. They are absolutely tireless when it comes to helping us. We will put them in areas, we actually had this in Mono not that long ago, where people were leaving their cars unlocked. We have a series of theft from auto, and we'll have them come out and put these flyers on cars just to help remind people, you know, to protect yourself, just lock your doors. Next slide, please. So this is, I just wanted to touch on this a little bit. In building our community office, we have had an officer come to be, she's a community liaison officer. Upper Grand District School Board does not have your typical school resource officer anymore. That has ended. And a lot of people aren't aware of that, that police aren't schools like we used to be. So this is what we have, we've been a little creative. She's a school liaison officer. She does a ton of work with the youth. All of her presentations, and I have them up here, so a lot of personal safety, online safety, sextortion for grade eights, really, really important information. So she runs these programs in the schools, they've all been approved by the board, and obviously very, very important to educate the younger we can. So we noticed a huge disconnect when they voted the school officers out, just not having that relationship with youth anymore. We saw a big difference. And a lot of issues in the school. Amy Pitten is our school liaison officer. She's been working very, very hard. She just had a huge case with, I think it was four or five schools that it stretched over, and things that the kids are doing and they're not even thinking that it's illegal. And I see some heads nodding because people are probably aware of what the issue was. But AI is an amazing thing, and they're taking the head of one person and putting it on the naked body of another person, but thinking that there's nothing wrong with that because it's not actually that person. So if we're not in there checking, super important. So very happy to have Amy back in the schools. And she's also presenting, it might be on the next slide, she's also presenting to parents. So if that's something that you were interested in, having her come out to one of your parent groups, she's in the schools at parent nights as well, giving some of this information. Next slide, please. And yeah, so that's exactly it there. So she'll come out and discuss the social media and cyberbullying and sort of how the law relates to all of that. I think that might be my last slide. Oh, one more. So this is Amy as well. Again, I said she's doing a lot of outreach with the youth. She is starting a program summer where she'll be working with high school students, they all have to have 40 volunteer hours to graduate. So she's going to be running this program. She's got a lot of really cool things that she's going to be doing with them. Well, we'll do them as a team, but Amy's elite on this. And there's going to be, you can watch for it, there'll be a media release that's going to go out, asking students to submit their applications, and then we will select some lucky students that get to hang out with Amy this summer and work on some of the elite. So yes, thank you very much. Thanks for, I just wanted to share, to sort of highlight some of the things that are new that the OPP is doing in the community. So thank you very much.
Just before I open up to the floor for questions, I have a question for Larry. Well, there's one more. Pardon me. Go ahead.
Who's running the AV? What's his? Andrew. Oh, Andrew, you gonna throw mine on? Perfect. Okay, so I'm going to talk for just five minutes about auto theft. Typically, auto theft isn't an issue in rural communities, but Mono has experienced it, being on the edge of Orangeville. Dufferin County unfortunately is fairly high on the auto theft spectrum in Central Region, one of the top three in Central Ontario for auto theft. So I think it's good to build that awareness locally on it. And yeah, I'll get into that. So just next slide. So I want to stress, the first thing I want to stress, a lot of people ask, you know, "What should I do if somebody's stealing my car?" And I can't stress enough that they will do anything that they can to get away. So just call the police. And I personally experienced this, being struck by a stolen vehicle. So I'm just going to show you a video. This is on the internet. It's a fairly, it's a little bit of a shocking video, so if you want to go to the next slide. This is from last year. This is our auto theft team trying to make an arrest. So I just want to stress the importance and the dangers. Auto theft, you know, traditionally, it's been spoken of as an insurance issue, a property crime issue, but we are seeing increase in violence. And as I said, these individuals will do anything it takes to get away. So essentially, this is our theft team, they're blocking in an underground garage. Okay, so I can't stress enough the dangers of these individuals that will do what they can to get away. So next slide. And that's just to grab everybody's attention right at the end. You like that? So yeah, just generally, as everybody knows, it's referred to as an epidemic in Ontario. Globally, Ontario is a leader. Interesting story that it's... Interesting story that it's actually kind of a badge of honor if you're in a country that receives stolen vehicles to leave the Ontario license plate on. So in, in, in some of these countries, Ontario plates are being driven around. So next slide. So everyone asks why. The pandemic was a big start of it, that shortage of vehicles. I was fortunate to work on Project Myra as an auto theft project right around the pandemic. And it was, a lot of people buying stolen vehicles, that's what's called revind. So you think you're buying a legitimate vehicle, but it's been basically re-identified to look like a legitimate vehicle. Our proximity to Montreal, a lot of people ask how many vehicles are going overseas? It's a mixed opinion on that. You know, some experts say around 60%. So a large amount, but a large amount also stay in Ontario and get what's called revind. And I'll explain that a little further. There's some other reasons. Next slide. So just some trends, again, revins. And then those revins are being used by criminal networks, by criminal organizations. Like I said, they, they, they are staying in Ontario and what we're finding and what we believe is going to happen as there's a pressure, as there's pressure applied to the Montreal port and by CBSA, less will go overseas because of that and more may stay here. So again, that whole issue of revining vehicles. Next slide. So this is very common that everybody knows, a common way of stealing vehicles. And that's what the majority of our vehicle thefts are right now, are these relay attacks. The next slide will show you a diagram of just generally how it's done, if you want to slip, flip to the next slide. So it involves two individuals. We've watched videos where it takes about 30 seconds for them to, to do this. Does anybody drive a Land Rover in the, in the group? No Land Rover drivers? Okay. So yeah, that's generally how it happens. Next slide. So top, right, this is, this is just a few months old, so it does change. Any CRV drivers in the room? Yeah? Yeah? Okay, I got some key fob bags for you. So this is, yeah, CRVs are numerically the highest, but you also have to look at the percentage. So that's why I ask about Land Rover drivers. There's just more CRVs out on the road, so more of them are getting stolen. So just numerically speaking. Next slide. So just some tips. I have some tip cards also. What's important, all I'm going to get at is a layered approach. So while I may give you a key fob bag, you can't say, okay, I'm good now. You really have to take a layered approach, not just the vehicle protecting the vehicle or, but also where the vehicle's parked. As, as Teri Ann said, the, the safeguard, you know, like lighting around your house, things like that. So that layered approach you have to look at. Steering wheel locks, even the wheel locks, not just one thing is going to protect your vehicle. Putting it in the garage is, is really the best one if you have that opportunity. Next one. Yeah, just some, some other tips there. And we'll go into the next slide. And again, I've been stressing the revin. I think we are going to see the issue of revins going up. And it goes in hand with what Teri Ann spoke of about our safety rate. During Project Myra, so we recovered over 500 stolen vehicles that were revins. And I interviewed a lot of people that bought the vehicles and they were just meeting somebody in the parking lot, this was during the pandemic, who was wearing a mask, gave the person $50,000 or usually about 30, it was usually a good deal, and that was it. So really buyer beware. If you could take it to a dealership, if you're buying a, an older vehicle, I highly recommend that. And just some other tips there. Next slide. So one thing that's not on the slide, I'm just going to, two seconds, go over is the auto theft grant. So we led, Dufferin wrote a grant, I wrote an auto theft grant for Central Region, and we received it. So we received, when I say we, it's Central, Central Region OPP, half a million dollars to address auto theft. Fortunately, here in Dufferin, since I'm leading that grant, I, I'm applying a lot of the projects first here in Dufferin. So as Teri Ann said, the dealerships, when they were all hit, that's where we integrated that public engagement piece as part of the auto theft grant, which is one of the key pillars of the grant. So yeah, we're sort of leading here in Dufferin, addressing auto theft regionally. That's, that's it. Any top ups or any questions for the Andrew?
Thank you. I've been itching to ask this question, as I think everyone can tell, to Larry Matkowski about technology that is now being used to scan license plates. And looking at your statistics, it suggests that the number of stops has increased quite dramatically. Can you speak to the, what that technology does and how it's helping you find stolen vehicles and suspended drivers and that kind of thing?
Yes, every car, and I'm talking about marked cars, have a laptop computer in them. And when you sign on, beginning your shift, you sign on to a, to a front mounted camera and it scans every license plate as you drive it, just infinitely. It's just so fast, it's hard to comprehend how fast it is. And in my case, I have it set for, you can have different settings on it. I've got stolen vehicles, people without driver's licenses and suspended drivers. So it alerts you, something goes off, it alerts you, it pops up on the screen and you double check and make sure everything's valid. You'd be surprised, shocked at the amount of suspended drivers out there. It's, it's phenomenal. And driving without licenses, it's incredible. So that's how that works. The odd times it's down, but not very often. So it picks up every plate.
Thank you. I should have mentioned at the outset that Mono had, up until the beginning of April, a police services board. And it has had a police services board for the last 23 odd years. We've now been amalgamated with Moamer and Melanthin insofar as a police service board structure is concerned. But I'd like to thank Mike Walker, who was our chair, longtime chair, and Wayne Evans, who was the provincial appointee. Thank them for the work that they have done. Our meetings are open. Anyone is, is able to have an item addressed at a police services board meeting. And I'd encourage any of you to, to follow up with that if you feel very strongly about some aspect of law enforcement in the, in the town. Now I'm going to open it up to you to ask questions specifically on road safety and policing generally in Mono. If you would come up to the, or just Fred's got a mic there. And I'm also going to encourage members of council to jump in at any point they wish.
I noticed that-
If you could give us your name.
Marion Heron. I live in Blind Line. I noticed that Highway 10 on Hawkeye Road has a lot of accidents. I'm not sure of all the reasons, but I noticed that it does not have a left-hand, advanced left-hand turn lane. And, but just the next light south going into Watermark has a left-hand turn. So to me, Hawkeye Road is much more important. It's more traffic goes through there. Do you, as police officers on accidents, do you recommend to the MTO about having extra things done at intersections?
Actually, if I could just answer that, if I could. We did have a serious one there two years ago involving a motorcycle.
It was last week too.
Yes, there was last week. There was a very serious one with a motorcycle. Actually, the guy was a retired paramedic, so somebody may know him. And as part of the lawsuit and the civil litigation, that was looked into. So I know that changes are coming, but that's the province of Ontario, that's provincial highway. So it does take time.
Yeah, thanks Larry. So great question. Again, police are just part of the solution to, on any public safety, traffic safety or what have you. So we do consistent traffic analysis, just like the provincial government does traffic analysis. And part of our responsibility to work together to the community is to bring these issues forward to the decision makers of our communities. So, you know, town council or through the detachment board or through the police. And we're all talking on a regular basis. And then what happens is, you know, regionally, they will then go to the province to help advocate for the- From our perspective, part of our responsibility in education, engagement and enforcement is if we know there's a problem intersection at a particular time or that's caused by a particular causal factor, then we are going to be assigning resources at the right places at the right times. We've got our officers who are out in the community. Every single traffic stop is an opportunity to interact with the public. We've got the great work that Larry's doing, the great work that Sergeant Pencarina's team is doing and the community responding it, doing social media, just talking to people out in the community. And it's our responsibility as a community to keep each other safe.
I can add to what the officers have said. County of Dufferin, of course, has some responsibility for that intersection. And we did have a motion that I moved, seconded by Deputy Mayor Nix, that Ministry of Transportation install left turn signalization at that particular intersection. Unfortunately, we got a letter back saying that they had looked at the intersection, they had visited the intersection on two occasions. And based on these results, MTO does not support implementation of advanced left turn phases at this time. I'm reading directly from their response to our motion. So all of that is by way of saying that when you see that we jump in as advocates, feel free to, to write to the MPP, write to the premier, write to the Minister of Transportation to reinforce what we're trying to say on your behalf. Next question.
The issue of coming out on Mono Centre Road onto Highway 10.
Elaine, if you could just give us your name for the record. Thank you.
There's a serious issue, especially if you've got a horse trailer or anything, since they repaved the prop, the Highway 10, there's more of a, or less of a clearance of being able to see two vehicles coming towards you. And if you're turning to go south on Highway 10, is there anything that can be done there to improve safety? Because you're taking your life in your hands when you pull out.
Okay, so thank you for that. That's probably a good Larry answer. I'll let him get to that after. Sorry Larry, sorry to interrupt us. So again, we're part of the solution, right? So we have a role through education, enforcement and engagement. Having said that, that is where we need our community to come together to bring forward solutions to the decision makers, right, to council, to come up with some strategies and ideas. And with further ado.
No, I agree 100%. That's, that's a deadly intersection. It's not safe at all. You're almost better to go down here in Ontario and come out of the, at the 10 side road. But again, I think this lies in your worship's hands again. I'm sure you've made note of this. That's an, an MTO issue.
Brought it to their attention repeatedly.
So with that said, from our perspective, you can rest assured that we'll continue with that public safety messaging and we'll continue with putting resources. We'll look at some data analysis and we'll look at putting resources there as best as we can to monitor during those peak periods.
Could I, Lawrence McDonald? I just wondered if the police and probably the municipal people as well could speak to the issue of fines. I've thought for the last 10, 15 years that speeding, reckless driving, drunk driving, careless driving, you know, it's like $500 or something and a slap on the wrist and you do it and do it. And if you're coming through Mono in a Lamborghini, I don't think that really works anymore. You know, it's just, it's not a deterrent. And we do know negative reinforcement works. It's not as great as positive reinforcement, but negative reinforcement, you don't stick your hand in the fire a second time. And I'm just wondering, what are the, the fines for speeding? I live on the Mono-Agila Town Line and it's a gravel road and people are ripping through there, over the hill where we have a blind, you know, driveway coming out. Like it's, it's the entire roads. We have people tailing us on the back roads, passing, like it's not just the major intersections. And it feels like I can get away with it, so I do it. And, you know, negative reinforcement works really well with that kind of psychology, unfortunately, but maybe we all need to do that. I don't know what the rates are, but I'd be interested to know.
So I won't be too long before I give that to your worship to answer, but I believe he addressed that earlier at the start. So we don't have anything to do with the fines. We don't have anything to do with the legislation, although we sit in collaboration with community stakeholders and partners when it comes to advocating for road safety or anything public safety. So from a fine perspective, we can't comment at the, right? It is set by the senior justice, I believe, your worship regional senior justice, something like that. So provincial, it's a provincial law, right? Just no different than criminal code offenses are set by the federal government. So we enforce the legislation and we don't have any say on things like how much it costs to, you know, if you go through a red light.
Our road safety emergency motion contains a, a statement that fines for basic speed, speeding offensive, offensive have not increased for over three decades. They've remained the same. And over that period of time, they've lost 50% of their deterrent value. Fines are notionally set by the chief justice, but in reality, she works from the recommendation of the government of the day. If the government of the day doesn't want to increase those fines because they think it's another form of tax, I think that's a serious problem. So we are calling on, on the province to look at the Highway Traffic Act fines. Many, many of them are a basic $85 for all kinds of, of infractions. And I know personally that the basic speeding fine, I'm not talking about stunt driving, but the basic speeding fines have not increased for over 30 years.
I'm Sharon Edmonds. I live on the Mono-Agila Town Line. We've lived here for 16 years and I travel Airport Road about four or five times a day. I see you on the Hawkeye Road all the time. And your little sneaky spot. Yeah, no, you're not sleeping. Why can't we put cameras in? Why can't we put a camera at Highway nine, Highway 89, and then have our average speed? These are such big areas we're trying to police. There is so much speeding on Airport Road. There is so much dangerous driving. Daily, somebody is coming at me as they come over the hill where people are overtaking. We have gravel trucks that literally are doing 30, 40 kilometers an hour. People are frustrated. Collingwood has expanded. On a Friday night, you cannot get out onto Airport Road until the lights at Highway 89 go and the lights at Highway nine go. So we have a volume of traffic. Why can we not just average speed them all the way up? Because there are cameras that are effective for that.
Well, the province does allow us to implement something called automated speed enforcement, which is basically cameras capturing vehicles in excess of the speed limit. The problem is it comes with strings attached. It cannot be deployed in areas that aren't designated as community safety zones and it cannot be used in, on roadways where the speed limit is in excess of 79 kilometers per hour. So that precludes its use on Airport Road as an example. Could be used elsewhere, but I'm fighting the battle to get the province to give us strings-free automated speed enforcement to deploy where we think is appropriate and not muddy the waters with conditions that basically are a, a deal breaker.
So we've tried and as John says, we've written letters and I think it just requires many more people to be doing the same thing. One or two municipalities doesn't make much difference. But if all of you in the room wrote to Sylvia Jones and to Doug Ford and said, this is a big concern for us, let's get with it, I think, I think something would, would start to happen.
Next question. Hi.
Helga Smolders from Fourth Line in Mono. I just want to say, John, Mayor Creelman, that I once said on Facebook that third and fourth line people are running the stop signs constantly. And you did something about it. There was a police car for about two weeks at the fourth line and the side road. And thank you so much. It really works.
Thank you.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
From Lady Constable. Why did they take the police out of the high schools? It's a great way to have young people be on good terms with the police. Like I supplied doc for 25 years in the high schools and I liked the, the presentations, they were great. Like my own- Like, my own earth, would they do that when it's working?
Thank you for saying that. And I couldn't agree more. That decision was not made by us. That's much higher up, and fortunately, it started in the city, Toronto, Piel, and it just trickled out. So, yeah.
Sorry, just to add to that, it's not a decision that the police made. It's a decision that the school board made. So I feel that's a question perhaps that you could direct to that.
One explanation with the school board for this chaotic decision.
Feel free to write the school board, because they're just reacting to what other school boards do. And I knew a number of the OPP officers who attended MAPS when my daughter was there, and she didn't feel threatened. She really enjoyed the presence of the police, and it made her day one day when the officer asked whether I was her grandfather.
Yeah, I always felt that the students felt it was a positive thing. They asked questions and everything. I think that the ones that would be upset are the ones who had reason to be upset. And, you know, this new mediocrity in the schools, I'm sorry, I'm retired now, so I can say it. It's going down the drain.
Next question. And if we can get the mic to the back of the room at the end of this question, that would be great. Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm Sean Roberts. I'm from the Fourth Line. I just, actually, a softball question first, but my son wanted to know who's operating the PowerPoints over there.
This guy.
So could somebody answer that?
So we have a staff member, Andrew Dahmer, who does all of our AV and technical equipment. So he's the wizard behind the screen. He's upstairs. Say hi, Andrew. Take a bow.
Good question.
Yeah, my son's question wasn't the main question. So my question, I mean, your chief of isn't here, but I have a question to the OPP. I mean, we're basically talking here about limiting or deterring crime, dangerous driving, things of that nature. I believe, and I haven't looked at statistics, but I believe that the amount that taxpayers are spending on unmarked vehicles has increased. To me, it would be a limited crime deterrent to have an unmarked vehicle. We would probably deter more crime if, on the side of a road, instead of a ghost car where we're hiding our police presence, we're all paying for police presence in here, instead of hiding it, if we actually had a marked police car or more marked police cars, maybe criminals would think twice about committing crimes, stealing cars, doing whatever here. So I guess my question is, why are we increasing unmarked vehicles? Why are we not having more marked vehicles on the road? Especially, even if citizens are like, "Oh, my gosh, my wife is hurt," or "There's a crime being committed." We can run to the marked police vehicle as opposed to, where are you guys?
Thank you for your question. We don't have more unmarked cruisers. In fact, at our detachment, in every detachment, there are actually more marked cars than there are unmarked cars and subdued cars. So subdued cars, as an example, when you walked in, you saw the Dodge Durango, it's black, and it's got the subdued marking. Every detachment has a ratio, and there's actually more ratios of marked cars for that very reason. So rest assured that, you know, you do see more black and whites driving. That is our standard patrol vehicle. Having said that, every vehicle that the OPP has, whether it's an unmarked car, a subdued car, a motorcycle, I don't know, we can't consider a bicycle a vehicle. I guess you could, yeah, and the highway traffic, that's a vehicle, or what have you, or snowmobile, has a particular place. So for the day-to-day patrol, our officers are out there in fully marked cars. There's no more actually unmarked cars. I can't speak to those numbers across the fleet across the province, but I'm quite certain every detachment, actually, every detachment does it the same way. There are more marked cars than there are unmarked cars or subdued cars.
I guess, what is the point of having an unmarked vehicle?
There's plenty of different investigative reasons why we, or why we use unmarked cars versus mark, sorry, marked cars. So unmarked cars, in some cases, they have a particular traffic safety function, right? So on the flip side, I've heard other people say, "How do you catch people always driving marked cars?" Well, no, we drive marked cars because we want the visible presence. We want people to know that we see the police. But having said that, when we are in our unmarked vehicles, let's say, doing a particular traffic detail or some type of other investigative detail, we need to have some element of surprise. So that's why we use unmarked cars. They have a place. They're a tool in the toolbox, if you will. But I can assure you, there's no greater number of unmarked cars than there is marked cars. If you come to our station one day for a visit, you'll see actually pretty much all Code One cars. I think in our fleet, how many unmarked cars do we have?
There's one in the parking lot.
Unmarked patrol vehicles? We had the one vehicle that MSRT used, and unfortunately, the officer was T-boned in a crash. So actually, we don't have any unmarked cars in our fleet right now. So as an example, in Dufferin, we don't have any.
There's one in the parking lot.
No, that's a subdued vehicle. Okay, so that's different. So in terms of subdued vehicles, I believe we have a couple, one at each location, or three, rather, a Charger and two Durangos. Okay, so four out of a fleet of over 30 vehicles, let's say.
And just one more question, and sorry, I know I'm asking a tough one. But I guess this also goes into public safety. I think everybody here is aware of the police officer that lost his life due to being unidentifiable. I mean, it also kind of creates public safety. I mean, it's great that there's four, but I mean, I can understand, you know, more where we're doing, hey, we're doing a drug bust, and we don't want the drug dealers to know that we're approaching them or whatnot. But as far as, you know, letting people on Highway 10 or Airport Road or these places that you're doing these speed details or safety details, you know, we can have a marked presence where people are like, "Oh, my God." You know what? I've been here because the OPP is, they're all over this place, as opposed to them driving by, and, you know, maybe they're doing 90, and you guys are like, "Ah, they're doing 90, let's not worry about it." So I guess it's just more of a comment, but, you know, we've recently had a police officer lose his life in Toronto due to being unidentifiable, and personally, I, just for traffic detail and also to deter crime, I don't see the point in having an unmarked vehicle, but it's just a comment.
Okay, well, thank you for your comment. Appreciate your perspective.
Fred, if we can.
There was a hand up in the back.
There was a hand up in the back as well. Okay.
Hi, I'm Marcy Lippman, and I've lived on the 30th side road of Mono for 30 years, and I've wanted to ask this question for 30 years. Why is there not a stop sign on the 30th side road between Highway 10 and Airport Road? I have to tell you, and I've heard it directly from a police person, that people will use the 30th side road instead of Highway 89 when they're trying to escape the police. And we all have, all kinds of people, people use 30th side road so that they don't have to use Highway 89, and they can go as fast as they want because there are no stop signs.
Marcy, I don't know that we can immediately today answer your question, but I promise we'll look into it and give you an explanation as to whether it's warranted or not. Go ahead.
Thank you for that question, Marcy. And I'm sure people do wonder that, and there are a lot of accidents that happen because people just forget there might be a stop sign somewhere. It's confusing in the country when you transfer from one town to the next town to the next township, because in some places, the roads going north-south don't have stop signs, and the roads going east-west do. And in another municipality you go through, it's the opposite. So there isn't a consistency in how that happens, and there's some really bad accidents that happen on the Mono-Ammerath Town Line because of that switch and because of stupid driving. But it is, it is kind of, I think, becoming more popular to have four-way stops everywhere because people just don't pay attention, and they forget where they are, and they just go, and they don't see a stop. Like, I don't know why people don't see stop lines anymore, stop signs, but now they're getting bigger. Did you notice that? I think that's for our age group. But anyway, I think it's a good question, and we do have to look at that, but there is a pattern that happens in different townships about how they set stops. So worth looking at.
We'll follow up for you. Yes?
Hi, my name is Hanny Simo. I live on Hawkeley Road, and my question is, of course, same as everywhere, people are driving like they're, you know, going on some raceway. It's just insane. But my question is, why is there transportation trucks allowed on Hawkeley Road? It is all residential. There is no way it should be allowed. It's a paved road, so you know that they're just taking a shortcut. It's very dangerous, very loud and disturbing.
Well, it's a county road, and the county has a philosophy towards the movement of vehicles that is a little different than maybe mine, but they tend to want to see the county roads used as a mover of vehicles, including trucks. I know it's an issue on Mono Centre Road. I know it's an issue on Hawkeley Road. And again, I think we need a voice, voices out there who are saying, "These roads should not be used as shortcuts or an alternative to the provincial highway system," as an example, and I'm afraid they are now.
Thank you for saying that. I know I've asked this question before, Hanny, so thank you. And I was told that they have a right to use those roads.
Until they don't.
Right, no, but that's why they're on there now, for sure. So if, I mean, I don't know if they're county-operated, that we can, can we change that? Can we just all go to county council and say, "We don't want this?"
Can I?
Oh, Melinda, is that you?
Can I ask a question? Yes, it is. I'm terribly sorry that I'm only on the telephone and not in person. The last question from Ms. Lippman was about 30th Side Road, which is a town road, correct?
Correct.
And then the next question is about a county road, Hawkeley Road, correct?
Yes.
Right? Right. So, but, so the first question, I mean, that is our purview, is it not, to put some stop signs in? We don't, we'll look into that, but with respect to the county, don't we have two representatives on the county, you and the deputy mayor?
Absolutely.
I mean, when you say the, when you say the county, it is, it is still us, is it not?
The county is us.
Okay.
And I'm happy to advance that argument. I've made it before without a lot of success, but I'm happy to take it up again.
Well, wouldn't it be like, is there not like a weight limit, maybe, that, because these roads are getting, you know, used beyond what they were built for, and these, you know, we're the ones that have to pay for road repairs, the taxpayers who live there that get stuck with the bill?
I think it's more a philosophy issue of what the county believes its road network is supposed to achieve. And I beg to differ with that in instances where the county roads are being used as an alternative to Highway 9, Highway 89, Highway 10, and are being used as a shortcut for transport trucks that frankly are on the meter in terms of getting to and from locations in an efficient way.
So perhaps at a meeting, one of us could put forward a motion to get our county reps to actually take that to the county.
I'll give you my commitment to do it, even without a motion.
Can I interrupt again, please? It is a, it's an, it's, you know, recently, we've had a, the gravel, the gravel pit, and discussing in the conditions in the gravel pit that the trucks from that particular entity will move along going in this direction, not on the road, and so on. So how would you do that if it was transport trucks? It would be signage, right? Because it is, these would be trucks, I mean, the trucks that are all around Ontario, as I drive across the country here, the trucks are everywhere. It's a problem because we have such consumerism, right? We have, the products need to be moved. But would it just be signage? Because there wouldn't be any actual company that always rides the road. It's everybody, right? It's trucks from all businesses. So it would be signage that we would be asking for, correct?
Well, and an amendment to the county's road bylaw, there'd have to be a cutout or an exception for local deliveries, as an example, but we'll follow up on it.
Great question.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, OPP, for being here. My name's Catherine Moisawski. I live in the town of Mono. I have two questions. One question was brought to me from one of my neighbors about chronic speeding within the neighborhood from their neighbors. And, sorry, and I had suggested him for not to face the neighbor, to basically call OPP. But can you tell me a little bit more about protocol, what they should do? Some people feel like calling the police were bothering you with respect to some of these calls. And my second question is about CamSafe. I think it's a fantastic idea. And if you can explain to me what the difference is, the importance of evidence, the importance of catching people on camera in terms of evidence, and the difference between a charge and conviction, if you don't mind, and how important evidence plays a role, i.e. the surveillance coming from CamSafe. I think this would be a great way to have people get motivated to be part of CamSafe.
Go ahead, Elaine.
Yeah, and I just want to make a comment, so people know. We need you to speak into the microphone, because the people who are online cannot hear you if you're just talking in the room, because the sound doesn't pick up from the room, it only picks up from the mics. So sorry about that, but just so everybody knows that that's why we're asking you to do that. Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
So thank you. I'll do question one. Question two seems a little too difficult for me to answer on Saturday morning. But again, question one, you're not bothering us, right? That's why we're here. That's why we all signed up to be police officers, to help people, right, to protect the vulnerable from harm. So having said that, if it is an emergency, please call 911. If it is not an emergency, star OPP 677 on your cell phone, or 1-888, just do star OPP, 1-888-310-1122, okay? 1-888-310-1122. Another great thing, in case you don't know, I believe the information's on your detachment board website, we have the online citizen self-report website. So certain things like traffic complaints, not in progress, or not serious, things like mischief under 5,000 or under 5,000, you can report online. So what happens is, it's great because it's analysis for us. So please do use it, because it's information that myself and John and our other staff sergeant use so that we can come up with some solutions with our frontline supervisors and our officers to direct how our resources are being used. Please don't think you're ever bothering us, because that's why we're happy to help. Having said that, to the comments about approaching his neighbor, I can't answer that, right? So if I know my neighbor pretty well, and he, his, you know, child wasn't driving appropriately, I probably would have a conversation. But that's just me. But I would leave that up to the person using their own discretion, certainly. Please don't chase vehicles driving aggressively. It's not safe for you or anyone or the person that you're trying to chase. So I would suggest please not doing that.
Just before I turn to the audience again, I'd like to acknowledge that we have received some questions in writing in advance, and some of those questions mirror what has been asked here today. So I'm not going to go over those questions again, but one topic that seems to come up quite frequently is how you address or deal with motorbikes, and in particular, the noise that they make.
John's got the mic. I'm answering the motorbike question, because then I'll circle back to the CamSafe question.
question. Um, yeah, with the motorbikes, yeah, there are, uh, local bylaws and under the HTA, there is a noise bylaw, uh, sorry, a noise, uh, offense, unnecessary noise. Uh, so we do, we do enforce those. Um, sorry, I'm not overly familiar with motorcycle enforcement, if anybody else can, can help me out.
So, so I can say, John did a great job answering that one. Uh, there's nothing more I can say other than, yeah, there are offenses, equipment offenses and, and unnecessary noise and proper muffler, and our officers are trained and they're out there and they're looking for those things. So, we lay the charge, it goes to court, and, um, what happens in court is up to the court to decide, right? So, um, the other thing I would say, uh, is the sound that a vehicle emits, whether it's from a muffler and/or a tire, um, may also give us the perception that the vehicle is also going faster than it actually is. So, you know, we have to be mindful of that as well. Uh, beyond that, um, again, if you, if there are certain areas, uh, that you find or certain times of day, please use, uh, the online citizen self-report. Larry?
If I could just tell one little story? So, it's a couple of years ago, I still had the old Crown Beck, and it was a Sunday afternoon and I'm working a long weekend and, on the radio, because we're with different bands, we happen to be the same band as Alston. So, as we know, the motorcycles tend to drive in packs, the crotch rockets, for lack of a better word, from the city. So they're going through Calden, they're not stopping, they're going through Alston, they're not stopping, they go to Wasaga Beach. Where does everybody go? Down Airport Road, back to the city. So I go over to Airport Road at twenty-five and I'm going north, and as I go over the hill at twenty-five, they come so fast, they shook the car. Like, it actually scares you. So I pulled over to the curb immediately and they're long gone, and a guy comes up in a pickup and he says, "I think one of them just crashed." So I went back, I didn't see anything, but I see them now a good mile and a half away going south. So I followed them south, of course, I didn't chase them, boss. I followed them south. I turn around on Mono Centre Road and I come back north and there's a bike coming towards me at eighty, but you can see parts falling off it. So it's obviously just been a crash. I whip around, I get the license number, he sees me and he floors it. He's back up to two hundred. And we get down to eighty, uh, to Highway Nine and he's blown the motor on it. Long story short, he gets arrested, dangerous driving, under suspension, no insurance. The next day, being the good officer I am, I get a coffee and a doughnut. And I go back to the scene where I thought he might have crashed and I find a GoPro helmet cam sitting there. And he shows up five minutes later. Now, I'm so naive, I don't even know what I have because I don't know anything about computers. But he wants his GoPro back and I didn't get it back to him. And it showed from Sunnydale Corners coming south, two hundred and ten kilometers an hour. It was all on his helmet video. And when you see him passing cars at a hundred, that are going a hundred, he's going two hundred, you go, "My God." Like, I don't know how they do that. And he come to court and he pled guilty, he got ten thousand dollars. So that's, that's story.
Yeah, Teri Ann makes a good point. That sort of segues into CamSafe question. It's for anything and everything, so that'd be an example of it, right? Um, it's not just for brake and enters and that, and it's, you know, circumstantial evidence, yes, uh, sometimes in brake and enters or often, they might be wearing a mask or whatnot, but we need to know what type of vehicle we're looking for, um, if we're getting hit for brake and enters, you know, that's why we need those, to know where those cameras are. So, um, one-time special offer, at the end of all this, if you have a keyless remote that you can show me and you promise me that you will register on CamSafe, you will get a key fob bag, okay?
Follow? You, you, go ahead, Ralph.
Just a follow?
There's a limited amount of key fob bag services. Disclaimer.
Just a follow-up on that. If I put my key fob in this, or a similar one, is that all I need to prevent it from me, the message from being stolen?
It's not, it's not foolproof. Uh, so, we recommend the bag not be by your door, it be, you know, deeper into your house. So, and every bag, you know, I can't guarantee the, um, you know, the quality, it's all different manufacturers. So, again, like I said, it's a layer of defense.
Thanks.
Thank you. Gentlemen, with the mic.
Hi, uh, my name's Stephen Russell. I live on French Drive in Fieldstone. Um, I hope we all know about the speeding on that street, how bad it is. Hope we're getting our speed bumps back. They helped. But, uh, again, this is transport trucks. I've lived there, uh, phase one, original owner, and we still have transport trucks coming through a three hundred and something house subdivision. Is there anything? They put the signs up, first of all, the one by the Toyota dealership, that needs to be out at Highway Nine, not, uh, two hundred feet down the road, you know, hidden behind some bushes. So you gotta be fair to the truck drivers if they're coming off Highway Nine and turning left onto first line. There's no sign there. There is, but it's way down the road. So that needs to be moved closer to Highway Nine. Even better, put one on the arm of the streetlight, like you see all over the place. You know, you can go to any town, they have no trucks turning, it's up on the streetlight. Put a sign up there, be fair to the truck drivers, but coming the other way, there's no excuse. There's two signs there and they, they still come down. The car dealership guys are the worst because it's a nice loop, you know, you know, in our infinite wisdom, they've built a lovely test track for those car dealerships. You got a loop there. There's no stop sign all the way from second line to first line. It's a hur, a curvy hilly road. It's, it's, it's a disaster. Uh, I mean, kids get out from buses, there's transport trucks parked behind the bus waiting for the lights to go off. I mean, it doesn't mix. I mean, there's hundreds and hundreds of kids in that neighborhood. You know, it's just, and on the south side of French Drive, there's no sidewalk, there's no proper crosswalks. It's just, I know, this is not an OPP thing, this is more municipal thing. But for the transport trucks, we just call, I've called Manitoula and I've called the car companies, I've talked to their safety officers, it's, it's better than it was, but it's not, it's still not good. And it's, uh, um, uh, first student, they don't service the subdivision, Attridge does, the bus company. Yet I'll see forty, fifty first student buses a day go by my house and they're not going slow. So they're using French Drive as their front driveway to their, to their, and, and they're not breaking the law, they're allowed to use the road. But is there anything that can be done to get a, a stop light out at, at second line on Highway Nine? I mean, it's been talked about for years, apparently.
It ha, it has indeed, and, and I wonder whether we ought to consider, uh, making French a, a one-way to discourage that, uh, traffic.
It wouldn't be a bad idea, but e, even some three-way stops. Now, nobody stops, I mean, let's be honest, they roll through all the stop signs, but at least they roll through, they don't speed through. So, if you, if you put, you could put three, three-way stops, one at Benson, one at Ketchum, and one at Anderson, which I'm two houses away from, um, it would at least make it miserable for people to drive there.
Okay.
And tow trucks going to Carstar up in the industrial area, one after the other after the other with wreck cars. It's just, I mean, the, the issues of the residents driving poorly is definitely an issue, but just the volume of traffic for that industrial area is unbelievable. Unless you, like, I'll give you a lawn chair, you can sit in my front lawn for a day, it's unbelievable. It just is.
I was just thinking, the weather is getting to the point where that might be, uh, something we'd entertain.
Yeah.
Um, and, and as you know, there is a, a proposal, a development proposal, uh, before council now, uh, that would only exacerbate that problem, uh, if, uh, if it goes ahead. And, uh, MTO does not seem to feel the necessity of, of installing lights at the corner of Second and, and Highway Nine. Uh, we beg to differ if, uh, if in fact that development goes ahead. So, it's, it's a problem area, we have to look into it and, and come up with some solutions.
But can somebody look at, at least look at the truck signage on first line on Highway Nine?
Yes, we can follow up on that.
And putting local deliveries only, that just, you don't need that. Any truck driver knows a bill of lading.
Yeah.
If you have a bill of lading for that subdivision, you're allowed to go in there. And it's, so you don't need to put local traffic only, that's, that's a given.
Yeah.
So I think they think, if I'm going to the industrial area, that's local. Like, what would you think as a truck driver, if you see local traffic only and your address is allied threaded products on first line, or sorry, French Drive? What would you think?
Yes.
It's local.
Yep.
So, I, I think we need to do a better job in the signing, for sure.
Okay.
And one other thing, uh, one of the trucks I saw two years ago, Tandit. So I, it was a tanker truck.
Right.
So I went on Tandit's website, specializing in chemical shipments, driving through a residential area, and then at the end of French Drive, as you go to first line, there's a really steep hill there and a eighteen-inch-high guardrail at the end of it. If he, any mechanical problems, he's in that ravine.
Yes.
So, I, I just, I mean, you've seen me here before, this is, it's a problem and it really, really, really needs to be dealt with.
Thank you. We have, uh...
So, I'm also a, um, sorry to interject there. I'm also a resident of that street, French Drive, and I'd just like to second basically everything Stephen said.
If you could just identify yourself for us, Chris?
Sure. So my name is Ankur Aurora. Um, I live on ninety-six, uh, French Drive.
Thank you.
And so, we're at the, uh, at the hill that he's talking about where you meet, uh, first line, uh, French Drive meets, um, first line. And, yeah, it's a slope and it's kind of a blind corner if someone's coming from the other direction. You know, I've got kids playing out there and they're always speeding. And, yeah, we used to have, uh, speed bumps last year, so I think, you know, if we can get speed bumps here permanently, that discourages people from using this as a speedway, right? Um, definitely, the volume of traffic is a lot more than you would expect, uh, for this, um, for this, uh, area, for this, uh, subdivision. So I'm definitely thinking it's, yeah, it's the industrial, um, you know, complex that's down there that's drawing all the traffic or, or people are using it as a through road when it's really not meant for that.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, if you can definitely do something for the speed, that would be really, really very much appreciated.
So I gave a commitment that we, uh, we're going to have an open mic, a portion of the meeting, so I'm going to allow a, a couple more questions on, on road, road safety and, and police enforcement issues, and then I'm going to have to, uh, uh, thank our delegation of OPP officers and go to the open mic on other issues. Go ahead.
I'm Kirsten Ball, I live in Mono Centre. I have three quick questions. Um, where do we get, where can people get one of those, if not from you guys? And, the only place from OPP?
From me.
That's the only place to get them? You can't get them at Canadian Tire or...
Oh, no, you can buy them anywhere. We don't have the mic, but, uh, yes, Canadian Tire sells them.
You could even, uh, Google it, CA, uh, gives them out, uh, yeah, or not gives them out, sells them.
Okay.
But, yeah, just, just look it up, you'll see them everywhere.
And is the club an effective deterrent, do you think, or do they, can they just cut through it?
They could cut through it, they could cut through the steering wheel to then reef it through, but it's a layer, it's one of those layers of defense, right? And they see a club, they, and they might go to another vehicle, uh, instead of that vehicle because it's a, it's a delay for them.
Okay. Um, I can't, I'm shocked to hear that Mono is the third highest car theft county, but...
Duff, sorry, Dufferin County in central region for the OPP, so fourteen detachments. Um, we are up there right now, so that's why we're addressing it at the front end.
Okay. Um, my other question is about motorcycle noise on, uh, Hawley Road. We also get it on Mono Centre Road, but I know Hawley, I really feel for the people who live on Hawley Road. Um, and I guess two questions. Do you actually stop for and give noise tickets? Uh, I mean, I know you stop and give speeding tickets, but do you actually ever really give noise tickets on Hawley Road? And if you're serious about stopping the noise and the bikes on Hawley Road, could you not just sit at Hawley General Store on the weekend? Because they're all there and they're all about to tear down Hawley Road.
To answer your question, yes, I do stop the bikes. The problem we have, it's like tinted windows. What, what's acceptable? Um, now, I do understand and maybe Inspector can address this, Calden has a meter, I believe. Yes, they have a noise meter, I understand. We don't have that, uh, for certain decibels, and if we had one of them, we would talk about this for a number of years now, it, it may help. But again, I, I think, I think it has a lot, I'm not justifying the noise, but it's in a bit of a gully there, we have trees, we have bushes, it does amplify it a lot, but it's like tinted windows. We need a standard that we can adhere to, and right now I don't have that standard because I don't have the tool to do that. And on that subject, if I just might say something else, there's a fifty zone where you come east and west on Hawley into airport. It's a dead zone. Your phones don't work, uh, computer doesn't work, very, very hard to do enforcement there, just down here. Okay?
Sorry, thanks, Larry. So, with respect to the noise, it is a piece of legislation our officers can rely upon. Not everybody who gets stopped gets a ticket, right? So the officers have the discretion to charge, the officers have a discretion to give a warning. Of course, we're serious about the impacts that it has, unnecessary noise to the community, it has it on us. Having said that, um, it is a charge unreasonable noise. I'm not aware of a decibel meter. Um, it's up to the court to decide whether or not that vehicle's muffler was emitting unnecessary noise, or that vehicle emitted us unnecessary noise. Even just simply honking your horn for no reason is unnecessary noise. And of course, we know that happens. But, yes, we're serious and we'll continue to do our best to be at the right places at the right times, and I don't mean this as a scapegoat, but we also can't be everywhere all the time. So we, at least the county, we're doing our best to, like Staff Sergeant Bullock had mentioned, to prioritize where we have to be. But traffic safety, proactive enforcement and presence is just a piece of what our officers are doing every day. Our officers are working very hard and I've only been here for six months and I'm very proud of every one of them. They do a phenomenal job. Most importantly, when our residents are calling for the police, our officers are responding safely, efficiently, and quickly, and they are providing outstanding, excellent customer service. As a leadership team, that's what we focus on, is constantly improving that level of service, right? And then, when we do investigate occurrences, our officers are busy with the administrative side of things, and we are very well-supported with things that make our job more efficient, but rest assured, as quickly as our officers can get back onto the road to address your concerns, they are doing that, so.
Thank you.
And I haven't been here, again, just for six months, so John could probably explain what was done last year in terms of that particular problem?
No, no, you, you hit it all.
Good guess, right? No. So, we're out there, uh, when we need to, but again, keep on reporting those challenges, um, and we're going to do our best to respond.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to suggest that, uh, if you have any further questions on, uh, uh, road safety or, or enforcement by the OPP of, of, of other things, uh, if you could hold those, maybe approach us privately, but we really do need to get into the second half of, of the meeting, which is, as I said, uh, earlier, is an open mic. I'd like to thank our contingent from the OPP for their attendance here today. It's a Saturday, it's time that you, uh, that I hope you've found rewarding, but on the other hand, you're not going to get back, uh, and we've learned a lot. Um, and I'd just say one thing in conclusion, keep up the posts to Facebook on your successes out there. It is so valuable to see what is happening and make certain that, uh, we're aware of it as politicians and hopefully the people at Queens Park see those as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Sorry, just another thing. So, yeah, a big shout-out to TA and her crew for the amazing work they do with social media. So please, uh, retweet, like, share on Facebook or what have you, uh, our messaging, follow us. Um, but, yeah, just to come along the line, go along the lines of what I said, how proud we are of our officers, working twenty-four seven, three sixty-five through holidays, bad weather and what have you. Um, in our provincial traffic safety campaigns, your detachment actually scores generally top three, top four amongst the fourteen, and I always say stats is a good thing and then it's a bad thing because it means, like, we're out there and our, sorry, our officers are out there, our officers are working hard, and it's also a bad thing because, you know, despite our best efforts, some people aren't getting the message, and that's our, what we're trying to say here today is, we are part of a solution, we are part of your community, we have an important job of public safety and it means a lot to us in our hearts, and that's why we signed up to do the job we do, and we need to work together collaboratively to make the world a better place, starting with Dufferin County.
Thank you, I'm just going to declare a, a five-minute break and then we'll start the, uh, the rest of the meeting. Just five minutes. And, and should we put the mic out more centrally? Yeah.
You all good, Andrew?
We're back live. We're back live, yes.
Thank you, good morning again. I'm just going to have the, uh, the microphone brought forward. Uh, I'd ask that, uh, each one who, uh, each one of you who has a question, approach the, the mic. Uh, hopefully, we don't need to form a line, but if we do, we do. And state your name and your address if you could, please. So, uh, the floor is yours. Who would like to ask a question?
Hi. Um, hello, my name is Sharon Edmonds, I live on Mono Angela Town Line.
Florence McDonald, Mono Angela Town Line.
Um, we've come here today, um, for the last, a lot of us have lived on the town line for fifteen-plus years. And as you know, the portion that we live on is gravel. For the last four or five years, it has been atrocious, it has been unsafe. We have had school buses that have come off the road on that road. We have had ambulances that have come off the road on that road. We have had, my school bus on days has refused to come to us. It's not a no bus day, but they have said we don't feel safe on that road. The mud, the pudding slop that we are putting up with, the pitfalls, it isn't drivable and it isn't safe anymore and people are coming off the road. So we are coming to counsel now is that with climate change and with the conditions changing, uh, we're not, uh, we're not, and we know we're not going to pave it, no, we're just panicked, but we need different solutions. We can't keep doing the same thing and expecting a different result. We have graders on that road every day, every day grading that road. The manpower that's being used is unbelievable. Um, Judy has some solutions that she has looked into.
Yeah, and I don't know if there's solutions at all, it's just trying to find a, um, a difference. And I think probably a lot of it, as Sharon says, is climate change where, you know, the road is, it's a very wet road for some reason. And now we just, we have, as Sharon calls it, chocolate pudding that we drive through. And particularly up and down Sheldon Hill, uh, I've, I've driven past buses, I've had my brakes on for two hundred yards. I can't stop, even with my, you know, winter tires. Um, so yeah, the roads, they're, they're, they are a problem. Uh, I, we wondered also too though, they've changed the substrate that they're putting on. It's in a huge amount of dust, it looks like limestone. And I wondered about if there's some kind of, somebody we can talk to about maybe a cement-treated aggregate or some kind of screening or hard pack. There are certain grades of gravel that might help. Uh, apparently, there, there are ways you can do it. I don't think, I've ever seen them do this, where they put on a type of crushed stone or they use a vibrating roller, which will help, you know, solidify the substrate. They did change a, a huge, very dangerous hill about two, three years ago. And they raised the road probably about twenty, twenty-five feet where that culvert went in. And they put a different substrate on that little sort of maybe two hundred yards, uh, section. It's great now, that part doesn't develop these problems. So we know that different substrates will make a difference in the roads. Um, and you can turn on to any other road, our road isn't the same. We've got these gigantic potholes, we've got mud.
We have the Sheldon Creek on the other stream.
But it's all the way up, uh, and it goes much farther south as well. So, I mean, there is a lot of groundwater. But if you have proper drainage and proper crowning of the, um, of the road itself, it would probably make a, a big difference. So we just, we're wondering about who could we, you know, address that would know about, you know, road substrate availabilities and what might work for us.
I'm, I'm going to defer to my colleagues and, uh, I may have a few comments myself. But this is a question that could have been asked about any road in the town of Mono. So, um, hopefully, those who are here to talk about your particular section of road will be mindful of, of what information flows from this particular question. Ralph, do you have any comments?
I really appreciate you bringing this to our attention. That's the only way that we realize that something is a big problem. Our Roads Department have been looking at, uh, surfacing roads with different materials for the last, I think, five or six years. And we have gone to something, uh, else, which is called a, a three-quarter inch crusher-run limestone. And that has worked very well in many areas. Um, we've also learned, and I understand this from the current Roads Department head, Matt Donner, uh, that it's not suitable in some areas and particularly in hills. So they're, they're fine-tuning their, um, their approach to this based on, um, what they try and what works and what doesn't work. So, um, I have to tell you that I'm impressed with the Roads Department, because they're dealing with two hundred kilometers of roads and, and climate change. It used to be that the roads would freeze and we'd have a hard surface in the winter and you could treat it that way. Now the surface is, uh, frozen and it's soft, and it's frozen and it's soft. And you've got slicks and dust, et cetera. Um, I'm quite happy to present this to, uh, Matt and his, who's not here today and, and probably Mike Donner, who is, we'll tell, we'll talk to him anyway, um, that this is a concern. Um, and, um, and, and bring it to their attention. They probably know about this already. The question is, what can we...
There's graders there.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the grading, the grading is, is fantastic in, in Mono, the number of graders and times that they cross, uh, they cover your road surface. And I'm the seventh line and I notice it all the time. Um, so it, it may be that this is an area that we should have a, a special study and try and come up with some solutions. It's, it's very interesting to me, the feedback you've given me about the surface on the culvert, although I think that's a flattish area.
Yeah, it's still, it's a steep, but nowhere near as, it was very, not, we didn't even like to go down that.
Yeah. I'm feeling, very familiar, I'm very familiar with the road, I went down it yesterday, uh, but it was good weather.
Well, they had just graded, we are grading lasts about five, six days.
Yeah.
And we've got such big...
You need the mic, you need to speak...
Yeah, uh, we last five, six days, and if there's rain, even less down towards where the creek goes through, yeah.
Well, well, thanks very much for bringing, bringing this and it's not going to be forgotten.
Uh, I'd just add that we have received a, a written, uh, question, uh, from one of your neighbors who is a proponent of paving. And, uh, I, I think... I'm, I'm hearing no. Uh, and, uh, we're very mindful of our budget and the, and the delicate balance between maintaining taxes, uh, at the lowest rate in the county uh, versus, uh, adding a million dollars per kilometer, uh, for paving particular roads. And there is a point at which we consider paving. Uh, but it's a combination of the wear and tear on the road and the traffic count. And there has to be some, uh, you know, uh, objective, uh, reason why we would pave a road versus leaving it to gravel. But you should be mindful that there are people who live on your road, at least one person anyway, who is an advocate of paving, um, but not very, uh, attuned to what that would do to the tax bill.
So I do just want to support what Ralph said, because, uh, our Roads Department does an awesome job with what they've got to deal with and the whole climate change, you're right. Our question askers, because climate change has changed what happens on those roads. As Ralph said, it's a spring thaw and freeze every week. And so it, it's not just here either. And so I know that, uh, so, some of our, um, esteemed staff on the Roads Department, were down at the Good Roads Conference and I'm sure that this was a conversation that was held down there. And they're always looking for different solutions. And the limestone, they've been testing that, so they're, they are trying to work with this. But it's always good to hear. So, you know, just like the OPP say, use the online service, send an email and, and send in the, the complaints that you have when they happen to just say what's happening. And then they do drive the road, so they do know what's happening. But it's always good to hear from people how they see what's happening on the roads. And, uh, the more information that we have, the more we can examine things that are happening and make different decisions. But I know that they're always looking at what other solutions are there, out there, that we can take advantage of. So we'll just continue to do that. And that will no doubt come forward at budget time. So pay attention to the budget and be there when we start talking about spending millions of dollars.
Our email addresses...
Hello, Mayor?
Yes. Melinda.
Thinking about, just one, thank you very much. One, one comment with respect to the budget and, and the comment that, uh, that Sharon made regarding, you know, that the, that the graders are out so frequently and that that's got to have a cost. And I don't, and I, Matt has commented at budget time that, that this is a balance and they are paying attention to how much. We do, there is a point where you reach a tipping point to say, you know, it's so much money being spent on this. How, how, how would it be if it, if it were paved or portions of it were paved or portions of it were, were a different substrate, as you, as you say, which has a different cost, right? Each, each part of the gravel, when we talked about the budget and then even after, when we, we approved the contracts for, for buying the, the, um, products. They're all, they're all different prices and we need different, uh, spots to put different stuff, right? So, um, they are on top of it, but, um, uh, know that it is, it, it's not a waste having, having the graders out there. They, as, uh, as, uh, Councilor Mantolo said, I live on the third line and, yeah, they do my hill all the time and they, they do do a good job, but you, you wonder, are they just chasing their tail? So, uh, so we're definitely going to be watching this.
Thank you, and just for everybody's benefit, our address is council@townofmono.com. And that will arrive in the mailboxes of all, all five of us. Next question.
But, 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 but Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor, don't we also, don't we also want the, the, um, the, uh, Matt and the Public Works Department to be included in the, in the correspondence?
Absolutely, and their email addresses are on our website. So the Roads Department, Recreation Department, all of the other departments have a, uh, an email address. And, uh, we do, we do not have those terrible ones where you're, you're writing in some kind of box and you're not really sure that it's being sent and that kind of thing. We do it the old-fashioned way.
So I, I agree. The first, the first line of communication is to staff who are responsible for the roads, because it's their job, so they need to hear it first. Uh, and I, I, I do want to be reminded that we have on our unfinished business list a road study. So I guess that will also reveal some very important information to us as well, so that's coming.
Okay. Next question. Uh, Louis, if you'd like to come up to the mic.
Good morning. Uh, Louis, hey, Mono Center, Ralph.
You need to speak directly into the microphone. There we go.
Yep. Um, I'll change the topic, um, from roads to other problems in Mono. I'll go back, uh, twenty eighteen. Uh, there was an election. And I was fortunate enough to have been asked to, um, sort of chair the committee, uh, election committee. And, um, I decided at that time... And I decided at that time, because I'd been in Mono about 20 years, that Mono needs some help. And the council and staff needed a little bit of help from the citizens. So I prepared questions, typed questions, which I distributed to the nine candidates at the time. And I will read one that's reading the one that's my goal, to get satisfied. And my problem really is the lack of engagement and transparency between council, senior staff, and citizens. Now, this is the biggest turnout we've had for a long time. So this is the example I'll give you. I won't read the whole thing. But it suggests that council appoint a representative when a serious issue arises in Mono. And there's all sorts of political, personal, not just feel or things like that, but that is very necessary, that there is somebody from council to oversee a difficult problem. We had one, a couple recently. They won, or they're building a motorcycle factory. We've had things of that nature that nobody takes control of. We had a richie file, I think there were five or six hearings, all different people involved. And this is something that's gone on for a long time. And unless we can get some sort of a program and a responsibility, for example, some of these issues are $200,000, $400,000, the cost to Mono. And there's an awful lot of money that's been spent over the last seven years. I was personally involved with one called the Cox matter. He was trying to dump 7,000 truckloads next door to me. Very, very, very little help. We had to go outside for help. And again, there was nobody, it could have been stopped at the beginning, but the CAO at the time wasn't qualified to do that. So what I'm suggesting is that when we have issues, the issue, serious issues, or the definition of serious, whatever that is, it's in the eyes of the whole, really. And that they, we can approach council and request that council find their representative who's going to monitor and direct that file. I mean, we've spent several millions of dollars.
Louis, can we try and tackle your question regarding why counselors aren't assigned to particular issues or problems? Can we try and tackle your question as to why counselors aren't assigned to particular issues or questions? I think we can address that.
I'll make one other comment before you do that. I mentioned the Smokies. The Smokies was where the motorcycle factory was built. And it was a very, very difficult time for senior staff.
This is not appropriate.
Some really had almost nervous breakdown.
This is, okay, Louis, Louis, this is...
I was present at the time afterwards.
Louis, let's tackle one question at a time. There's other people in the audience who also want to ask questions. And if we allow them the opportunity, we can get back to you for a second question or third question.
I don't have a second question on this.
Okay, but let's, let's...
It's a lot of piece of information for the people. Three members of council, Mr. Mankulow, John Greelman, and Nick, all in a certain public arena, had mentioned, and I was there to listen to it, that they were going to get involved in the Smokie affair after the construction died down. And that was...
Louis, I beg to differ with your interpretation of what happened there. But I think you raise a very good point about why we don't have a system where we assign a member of council to address a particular problem. And let me, let me try and address that. You have a very activist council here. You've got five engaged members of council who are all over every problem and every topic that comes to our attention. And it's not to the exclusion of others. But the reality is that we all have different interests, but we somehow manage to decide on what topics we want to pursue. We have a member of council here, Elaine Capes, who sits on our planning committee, because she has interest in planning applications. We have Councilor Mankulow, who got personally involved with a noise issue at the Hockley Valley Resort a number of years ago. As it's fairly obvious, I'm all over the issue of public safety and policing. Should we have a system where the mayor maybe arbitrarily says to a member of council, you take care of that. You're the point person for that. I don't want to be in that position. I'd rather let my colleagues decide what issues they want to dive into.
But the public is entitled to know that a person of senior authority has been appointed to this office.
We welcome any suggestions. Our email is... Our emails are public. Our meetings are public. And by the way, we went to televise council meetings before COVID. And that was an initiative of mine. I'm very proud of it. We published something called Council Highlights, which is a summary of what occurs in council meetings. It comes out a few days afterwards. It has a subscriber's list of nearly 500 people, not to mention those who go online to read it. So I beg to differ with the analysis that we're somehow not transparent or not responsive. I think we are, and I'm proud of it.
I'm here professionally.
Next question, please.
No, at the mic. You've got to line up.
Oh, it's a lineup. Stage right. It's a lineup.
Brian Scott. I'm on Mono Center Road. I figure I'd start a line. It would be easier.
Excellent.
My comments and questions are around the recent Bruce Trail decision for to waive the, amend the bylaw, of the Parklands bylaw. Recently, the mayor posted on Facebook that, about this, and responding to some comments that were being made, sorry, comments that were being made within the community that were, in his words, wrong. Just fine. And then he, mostly it was around public input into the decision. And he said that, or he wrote that without public input, that there was no public input, it's just wrong. Council's televised, open to the public, and reported on the media, which it is. And our Council Highlights, subscribed by almost 500 residents, posted on the Mono website, report all of this. So from my perspective, that's fantastic. The more people we can, more opportunity for people to hear about what's happening in council is very important. But a lot of this stuff, especially I find on the highlights, is, it's an after-effect thing, right? So it's posting, this is the decision, that was made, this is what happened at town council, et cetera. It's not necessarily inviting feedback into that, okay? The other is the 500 residents of Mono that are subscribed. Well, there are, you know, there's 9,400 people who live here in 30, what, 3,300 households? So 500 is a pretty low number, from my perspective, on saying that there's a lot of public input. So the, one other thing I noticed is that there is a, you know, we put out a, the ads for historical designation in the paper to ask for input. This is, everyone sees this? And so this is, you know, this is something that is going to affect potentially the homeowner. It doesn't really come at a cost from, I don't think, that the town's going to benefit from. So for me, the amending of the bylaw has a potential long-term impact for the town. It is a loss of revenue. Nothing against the Bruce Trail, nothing, like, fully in support of all of that. But if this is amending a bylaw that potentially has a financial impact on the community, why are we not putting things in the paper, asking for input? Like, I think that's a quarter-page ad, and asking for input that way? So maybe you could answer that and just say what actually avenues you did do to ask for input on the amendment of the bylaw.
I'll call on my colleagues if they have anything to say on this. Otherwise, I'll chime in.
I have, I have something to say. It's Melinda Davey.
Yes, Melinda Davey.
Thank you. What was your name? I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. I just caught that you were from Mono Center Road.
Brian Scott.
Brian. Hello, Brian. You're right. You're absolutely right. And no, there was, on this, on this particular debate, there was no beforehand or during resident input. And I struggle with Facebook, because it isn't a town initiative. It's a resident initiative, which is great and has its place. But also, it is not monitored and policed, for a better word. So I'm struggling with our engagement, just like Mr. Baker just said. We're trying. We're doing things. We're following along with how social society has changed to electronic things. But it is interesting that still, you know, a flyer, when we do send out our newsletter with our tax paper that comes in the old-fashioned mail, it also gets a lot of, a lot of feedback from that, and there are people who enjoy that. So we are in a time zone that is tricky to be engaging. And so you being here today is what the town hall is all about. I certainly have put a notice of motion on the floor that we're to reconsider the amendment that's been made to the bylaw. And so stay tuned for that. I really appreciate your input. But you're absolutely, you're absolutely right. The only way that you would have known had been, if you were a regular person, to come to the meeting that we discussed at one meeting and sent our staff to propose an amendment. And when we came back, another meeting, when again, there was no public there. Though you're welcome to be there anytime, and a decision was made. Well, thank you for your input.
And thank you, because you raise an interesting point about when does council decide to do something over and above what we normally do when we amend a bylaw, which frankly is often. I mean, we do amend bylaws from time to time, and they do have an impact. Just for everybody's benefit, we meet on Tuesdays. We usually release the full agenda, along with all topics to be discussed and submissions that we received the Thursday before, no later than the Friday before. And in this instance, we had a request by the Bruce Trail Conservancy that was made back, I believe, the end of February. So it was publicly online for everyone to see in advance of the meeting where it was considered. The first step we took was not to agree to it. First step we took was to ask staff to come back with a wording of an amendment to the bylaw for our consideration. They did that for the following meeting. And again, that wording would have been disclosed to the public. At the same time, it's disclosed to members of council in advance of the Tuesday meeting. We considered it, voted on it with one dissent. The, my posting on Facebook was in response to the Facebook organizer relaying a flyer that I believe was sent to every household in Mono. And I believe there were incorrect statements in that flyer. And I felt that they needed, the record needed to be corrected. I stand by my correction. And I would just point out that the Committee of Adjustment is scheduled to consider the Bruce Trail's request at its May meeting. I think it's May 23, if I'm not mistaken. And the public is welcome, and the public can make submissions to the Committee of Adjustment. But in terms of the bald-faced statement that we've already decided this, the answer is no, we have not decided this. All we've done is amend the bylaw to give us the same discretion that the Planning Act gives us in terms of may collect a Parkland dedication. Our bylaw said shall collect a Parkland dedication, giving us no room to consider an application to do otherwise. So that's a little bit of the background.
A follow-up to clarify what you've just said, Mayor. The amendment is public, and the amendment names specific entities. And yes, that's the same language as in our planning, official plan. But things change, and bylaws should be, and if you are going to defer to say that our council-appointed Committee of Adjustment is the decision-maker on these sorts of things, then you're deferring to them, as opposed to putting in the bylaw specific entities that then hogties them into trying to, having to make the decision. It should be broader to allow their discretion. Or completely say, we're directing, we're directing. And so it's done, we haven't cleared the issue with our amendment, I think is obvious.
Go ahead.
You know what? I'm very happy that people come forward with questions and concerns, and maybe information that they've heard, so that we can all have the dialogue to make sure we all have a common understanding of what's transpiring. So I appreciate that, and that's why we're here today. And I'm very grateful that we have a community that's interested in having a dialogue like this, because that speaks volumes. So I do want to talk about the newspaper articles for a minute, because, you know, not all things are clear about what happens in municipal government or any other government, let's face it. So there are mandatory statutory requirements, in some cases, for us to put ads in a newspaper. Making a bylaw change such as this is not one of those. I'm just stating a fact. So can we always do better? Yes, we can always do better. We do rely on the process, and maybe we rely on it too much in that it was a letter that came, then it was on the council agenda, and we get the council agenda and all that package the same minute you get it. It's public. That is not, we get it first, and then we decide something, and then you get it. It is created by the clerk, thank you, and it's a lot of work to do that. And it is public, it's publicly known the day it's published on the website, when we get the link and you get the link. So it's not, we get it in advance. So that's something you should know. So you get it at the same time we do. So we get Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday to look at it, read it, digest it, research it, and come back to a council meeting prepared to talk about it. And you do too. And so it's there. It's on the website. And so we, it was on the agenda twice. So there were two opportunities for it to be publicly seen. And so we do rely on that. We can talk about how we can improve that, and that's a good thing to do. The other thing I want to talk about is the who subscribes. And I'm glad that you mentioned that, Brian. Brian? Yes, Brian. Because there's only 500 people subscribing now. But every single person in the municipality could do that. It's really easy. Go on the website, sign up, get it, so that we can reach you. So thank you for bringing that forward, and that's my little commercial.
A couple of things. We now, we sometimes take an approach on a bylaw that we will give it first reading only, so that we can get public input on a particular issue. We don't do it with every... We don't do it with every bylaw, but we do do it on bylaws that we think are going to be controversial. This was not one of them, but maybe it should have been. The other thing we have as part of the agenda, and I credit to Counselor Capes with this, but I was ensuring that we did it back in the 90s, was we have a to-do list. We have a list that is a part of every single agenda that ranks issues and, and, and things that we want staff to do, things that we want to do as a council, and we rank those according to priority. So anyone can pick up any agenda and see what our work plan is going forward. That list is not perfect. Sometimes we set completion, completion dates that aren't realistic, but it does give you a sense of, of where we're going, what we consider to be important, and we welcome feedback on that.
That's called the unfinished items report.
Next question. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, right straight. Good morning, Mayor, councilors, fellow residents. Thank you for being here this morning. This is a good meeting, lots, lots of folks here. My name is Denise Kuperman, and I live on Mono Agila Town Line, and I just have a couple of questions about the Bruce Trail Conservancy issue. I do want to say I'm a member of the Bruce Trail, and when I lived in California, I was like decades a member of the Sierra Club, which does much of the same work, if not more. So conserving land and the environment are very important issues for me. Financial, being financially responsible is also important to me. And so I'm just a little bit curious about the severances that the Bruce Trail has received. What portions of the land will be permanently designated as parkland versus what they can actually sell? For example, the property that got severed on the seventh line, it was 20 acres, five got severed with a house on it, that was listed and, and sold for about 1.2 million. The town had waived the severance fee, so there's a remaining 15 acres. Is that 15 acres permanently designated parkland, conservation land? Or can it somehow be sold in the future for another use? That's, I mean, my, my question is really sincere, it's just trying to understand, if the town's waiving the fee, what are the restrictions that are going to be placed on the lands where the fee is being waived? Is it permanent parkland or, and conservation land? Or do they have the right then to sell it in the future?
We, we have representatives of the Bruce Trail present, and I don't know whether they want to address this, or whether they will address it at the Committee of Adjustment meeting.
It seems an important question.
Let, let me try and, and address our motivation. The point that they made to us was that they are, by virtue of their acquisition of land and their business model of severing property in order to try and recoup some of the money that they spent on the land.
Makes sense.
They, they are attempting to create a trail network. I understand, and I think I'm, I'm correct in this, that their recent acquisitions probably will result in something like 10 kilometers of public trails that would otherwise not be created in the town of Mono. The issue for us was, is it then fair to turn around, given the fact that they're creating those trails? And I don't think those trails are going anywhere. I think you're going to see those in 50 years, frankly. And they maintain those trails, so it's not like the town trying to buy land to create a trail network and then having all of the overhead of maintaining those trails. But their argument was, why do we get basically hit with a, with a tariff for, for doing what no one else is doing right now? Conservation authorities are not creating this kind of benefit.
I understand that. My question is, what portion of the land gets designated as being conservation?
It's the retained portion.
None.
Excuse me. Melinda? Melinda?
I'm sorry, I'm not, if I was in the room, I could tell when there was a pause. None of it is parkland, Mayor, and you know that. It's a private property. Parkland is municipally owned for the taxpayers. That's what the definition of parkland is.
Well, I, I look at it, I look at it a little bit differently, Counselor Davey. I see it as land that is accessible to the public, where they can recreate to the extent that they can hike. And as to the issue of there being restrictions on that, those trails, there's restrictions on trails in the, in the provincial parks, there's restrictions on, on municipal trails as well, but I'm going to let the Bruce Trail address the issue as to, once they, once they.
None of it.
We have answered your question.
Please, Melinda. Let's let Bruce Trail.
It's an honest, just simple question.
Let's let.
Is it permanently public land?
Let's let the Bruce Trail address that issue.
No. It's not public land.
And, and at the appropriate point, they're not, we can play through? Hi.
I gave you permission.
Okay, great.
Elaine gave me permission. So thank you, your worshiping councilors. My name's Michael McDonald, I'm the CEO of the Bruce Trail Conservancy, and I drove up from Hamilton Day and grateful to be here in Mono. Yeah, I want to help answer a couple of questions. So firstly, the land is protected forever. That's our mission, is to provide, provide free public access to the Niagara. That's been our mission for 16 years. When we bring land into protection like this, we actually put money aside in a land stewardship reserve so that it can be protected forever. So that's our intention. We sever our conservation land, that's forever, and that's our whole mission. So I hope that answers your question.
My question is.
Excuse me, we need to use the mic.
My question is, what proportion of land is going to be, say you, in this case, you've got the 20 acres, five got sold, so you have 75% that's going to be conserved. When you have the bylaw and the waiver, would it not make sense to at least have some parameters? You could have another example where you have 100 acres, five gets set aside as conserved for a narrow little trail, and the remaining 95 is sold.
That's not what they're doing.
I, I think it's going to.
No, but I meant, in terms of our own bylaw, setting some parameters on which to, to waive the fee. I'm not opposed to waiving the fee.
Yeah. I don't, I, I think every property is going to be unique, in, in terms of what is the retained portion versus the rest of the property. I don't think we can, we can dictate those parameters. What we can do, and what I think some of us would like to do, is to define the issue from the standpoint of, if you're creating trails that are publicly accessible, to me, that is as good as creating playgrounds and, and, and public spaces. In fact, it may even be better, frankly. And I don't know if you can confirm, the Bruce Trail owns approximately 500 acres in the town of Mono?
Yeah, I don't know in the town of Mono, but we've got 18,000 acres along the Niagara Scarpment. But I just want to make it clear to everyone again, and super grateful for your question, and thanks for being a member, I hope you stay one, so that's great. Yeah, absolutely. But, no, so.
No, it is.
So what we're trying to do is protect land all along the Niagara Scarpment, and we make nature reserves, and we do that with donor dollars. So I think, like, if we came out, I, I think that's special and important, like, we're not spending the town's dollars to create this parkland for you. So that's really, really beautiful. But because the Niagara Scarpment's been developed, there are houses on some of the properties that contain trail, so what we do is we sever off those houses, we sell them, because there's also a housing crisis, and we want to keep those houses in production, and we want to respect the tax base, and so on and so forth. And then if we, we use those funds to protect more land. So that's, the severing of, of houses off of conservation lands is very common. We do that all along the Niagara Scarpment, and we actually cross 26 municipalities, and no other municipality charges us parkland levy fees. Malmer did once, but they reimbursed us.
Malmer, yeah.
Yep, Malmer did once, but they reimbursed us for that. So, but parkland levy fees are a tool that, if you are severing land for development, you know, if someone bought that land and was building houses, I think absolutely yes, you should have to pay money to build a park or to create some green space somewhere else. But the very nature of our work creates those parks, and that's free public access for all of you. So that's super important. So I know there's lots of supporters in the room. One of the things I want to say is that, you know, these questions about how the bylaw got changed, those are fair questions about your democratic process, and we're not, we think those are great questions, and you should have that healthy dialogue, like, we're not here to interfere with that at all. But I think there was some misinformation, but it's important that you know, again, that no other municipality is doing this. If, if we went to other municipalities and said, we're going to create a huge park for you, we're going to spend millions of dollars to do restoration work, to make sure that it's cleaning air and water, and you've all talked about climate change through the roads crisis that's happening, you want organizations like us doing this work. So I know the town is in a financial crunch, but don't penalize charities for doing great work protecting nature, and that's my hope for you. So Anton Diamond is an expert on the Land Planning Act, and the truth is that I think the bylaw, you know, overreached what the Planning Act says, which is it's all about development. So that's important that you know.
Melinda, please.
So, but also, you know, we're, we're a charity, we're happy to answer any questions. If you have questions, call me, call Anton, we're, we're happy to answer them. We're not doing anything secret or nefarious or having, I find all of the councilors have high integrity in Mono, and it's a great pleasure to work with them. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to acknowledge our next questioner, and mindful that we've already run over our, our committed time, but I think we should allow for maybe another question on this, and then move on to other topics, if anyone's got any other topic.
Because you went a half hour over, and I believe that we have our time now.
Well.
So my question is.
Wait, wait, wait. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, you should know that there are three properties involved here that we know of. The 20th, the seventh line, which was 20 acres, five acres were taken off. Thank you, we appreciate the parkland. The third line was 123 acres. What portion of that's going to remain? And then the third property is the second line, which is 238 acres, of which, what is going to be severed, and what is going to be parkland, and what are they going to do with the rest of the property? That's our concern, is, I don't, I trust, I love the Bruce Trail, I walk it every day, but we want some concrete information on what is going to happen to that land. Is it going to be sold to developers? If it's not, then just tell us that in writing. Now, my question to count, my second comment. The role of council and councilors, according to the Ontario website, says, and I'm reading it, a councillor has three main roles in a municipality: representation, policymaking, and stewardship. Many of the decisions will have long-term consequences on the municipality that extend beyond your four-year term, and should be made in context with your municipal planning and long-term health and welfare of the community. Representation: engaging members of the public on issues and considering their feedback. Stewardship: council objectives are to ensure that the municipality financially, administrative resources are being used in the most effective purposes. I didn't make it up, it's part of your mandate as councilors. I don't feel that the councilors had the right to make the decision that is going to financially impact this community for years and years to come by amending the bylaw without a public meeting. We had the right, had I not read, I don't think many of the people here, I paid for those yellow flyers, because I think it's important that people know what's going on in our community. If you disagree with me, I think that's great. That's what we all live in the community for, but you have to know what's going on. I am asking the council rescind the amended bylaw.
We have a notice of motion at the last meeting to do precisely that.
Not rescind it.
Not rescind it, but to reconsider.
To reconsider.
To reconsider, and, you know, I don't think you want us to rescind the parkland dedication bylaw.
No, just the amendment that was made, changing the wording.
And, and the, and, and Counselor Davey has a motion, a notice of motion, that will be debated at the next council meeting to do precisely what you're requesting.
Secondly, the Committee of Adjustment, and they do phenomenal work, they give hours and hours of their time researching, but the Committee of Adjustment, according to the Mono website, says, is responsible for making decisions on consent application, minor variances, enlarging or extending non-conforming use, and other technical matters set out in the Planning Act. I believe what you have asked the Committee of Adjustment to do is unfair, to make a decision that is going to impact our future, our tax base, and the future of Mono. I think that this is something that can only be made after a public meeting is held, and they should not be the scapegoat for this amendment. Thank you.
So if I may, council cannot make a severance decision. Only the Committee of Adjustment can make a determination on a severance application. Typically, the Committee of Adjustment establishes a series of conditions reparable to a, a severance, and they, and the person applying for the severance has, I believe, one year in which to comply. So those conditions could be that a parkland dedication amount be made, they could have to do with the Roads Department, they could have to do with a number of things, and there are financial impacts to the conditions that, that are a routine part of the Committee of Adjustment's activity. So we're not asking them to, to do something new or different, we're simply saying, in this area, you have a responsibility to hold a public meeting, you hold a public meeting, but I think that we have an expectation that they hold a public meeting at which the public can make submissions as to whether or not a parkland dedication fee is appropriate. I would assume that those with the, making the application for a variance have a responsibility to explain to the Committee of Adjustment what they are doing with that property, and, and whether, and, and what the, what the plans are for that property. Otherwise, if I were sitting on the Committee of Adjustment, I'd say, well, thank you very much, you're not getting a variance from the parkland dedication fee. We want full disclosure as to what your plans are. Where's the trail? Where's the retained portion? And what, what are your future plans? And that should all be a matter of public record.
The Committee of Adjustment's a quasi-judicial body, and it makes decisions, we don't make the decisions about this as a council. We have, if you like, delegated that to that committee, and they're responsible for that.
They are, they are.
Excuse me, excuse me, Melinda, I have the floor, please. I have the floor, please. So why, why did the Bruce Trail come to us? The Bruce Trail came just because they thought this was an unjustified financial levy. And we said, well, you know, maybe it is, but the Committee of Adjustment did what they had to do according to our bylaw. They had no discretion. That was the way it was made up. The Planning Act gives them discretion, but we, in our wisdom, when the bylaw was set up, I think it was 2003, did not allow discretion. We said, there has to be a payment, or there has to be parkland when there's a subdivision that's going to produce development. In fact, this one doesn't add any additional people, doesn't add any additional service requirements, because it already has homes on it. This, so where, where are we? We're in a situation here where they, we're looking at the Committee of Adjustment and saying, well, you did your job right, but maybe our bylaw wasn't right, because it does say, it's, it's going to make the Bruce Trail make a payment, which is, is probably not justified on any, on any rational grounds. So let's, let's change the bylaw to make it possible for the Committee of Adjustment, Committee of Adjustment to make a reasoned decision. And, and that's, that's all about, it's all about fairness here, and I think that's, that's why, what we've done. So it'll be, be up to the Committee of Adjustment when it hears it. So it'll be up to the Committee of Adjustment when it hears it, whether they decide that the assignment of 5% is valid or not. By the way, 5% of $1 million is $50,000. And there's two properties here. One was 100... I think it was up for sale for $1,250,000 or something like that. I don't know that it's sold. But anyway, this would bring in, at the best, $50,000. And the other one might be $50,000. So we're not talking about $1 million, we're talking about $100,000. So let's be honest here. Anyway, if it's unjustified, we don't want the money. Thank you.
May I speak now?
Yes, Melinda, and then councillor Capes.
Yeah, again, so many things, councillor Manchello. The idea that when we change bylaw... And again, we're changing bylaws fairly frequently. And certainly on the bylaws that I've been involved in, we usually talk about it and then say, "Oh, we better get public input," and we didn't. There seemed to be some sense of urgency, which I didn't understand. And thank you, mayor, for pointing out that indeed the Bruce Trail Conservancy had a full... Has a year from the decision. So we're down to... Still, we can take a few months to make this decision, which we did not. And the idea that a bylaw should be broad enough and so that it does last for a long time. So it's a $1 million property now that has a house that is uninhabitable. So I would argue, any sort of severance, I would argue, defines development. And in, as Mr. McDonald commented, that the Bruce Trail is happy to get on the bandwagon of more houses faster, even though that particular property is NEC. Everything is up for discussion these days. There may very well be a complex put on there or on the same footprint of a house. Lots of developers are quite ingenious these days on fitting more housing in. So the bylaw change needs to stand for many years, where ultimately, in our last budget, we ended up cutting $8,900 at the end so that there wouldn't be any more ice rinks and so on. Little amounts of money make a big difference to the little town of Mono with our recreation and park maintenance that we have. And looking forward, there may very well be $1 million over the number of severances that are in the works from this company and ones in the future. In the name of climate change and green and wanting to make things better, you know, it's a balance. It's all a balance. And I think that we need to, yes, be fair and balanced. Thank you.
This, again, a reminder to members of council, this is the opportunity for the public to speak. And I think we're sort of rehearsing the debate we're going to have about rescinding the amended bylaw.
Pardon me, just wanted to be clear.
If we can move on, we do have other people here who have other issues as well. But councillor Capes wants to speak.
If I make a sad face, I could speak. Thank you. I just want to point out that this isn't costing us anything. We are not paying for the severance. This is the map of the Bruce Trail. This is the map of our official plan, showing protected lands of the Niagara Skartment. See that green stuff all the way through the middle? That is what Bruce Trail is trying to protect and preserve for future generations, for everyone, forever. So I think they are doing us a very brilliant plan, because we talked about this on a committee not long ago, when I wasn't on council. And one of the big things that people wanted in Mono, because we are all about the beauty of what we have here, and they wanted to have a land trust. The council, the town, does not have the money to make a land trust. But guess what? Organizations who fall under the Conservation Act, whose role it is to conserve, protect land, that's what they're in. That's the business they're in. We had an open, public, open house, and we invited all of those organizations who do this: Bruce Trail, Nature Conservancy, there's the Farmland Trust. We invited them all. That is the way that we can fulfill protecting all of the green space we have. And I'll draw your attention to the Municipal World Magazine that says, "Why Municipalities Need Nature-Based Climate Solutions." This is the biggest nature-based climate solution we will ever get, and we are not paying a cent for it. So, thank you.
(applause) Okay, I'm going to move on to our next questioner. Next questioner, and I trust that it is on a different topic, because I'm going to try and get as many different issues raised before we bring the curtain down on this meeting. Mr. Darby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Mark Darby, First Line East. So good morning, everyone, and thank you to our great council, our great staff, and all the residents for... Thank you, Fred, for such a great town to live in. And I'm going to sort of jump on the citizen awareness, citizen understanding, and citizen engagement bandwagon, just for a sec, because I feel it is crucial that we have a vehicle where we can all understand the issues that are available or that are before the council and everything. So, and everybody has kind of touched on this, so I'm not going to go into great depth, because I know the hook will come pretty quick. So I think we all agree that full transparency and public available information exchange is the best way to deal with these issues. We've kind of touched on that. These were great meetings, because we have the public here. But the limitations are that not all people can attend these meetings. Or, you know, and we do have technology that will allow and facilitate people that are on shift work. And just any time that they have availability, they can see the issues and comment on them. So I just wanted to bring up an example, and it's not the noise bylaw issue. It was just the way it was presented, the noise bylaw exemption. So I think there was a bit of a shortcoming in the way that public input was required or accessible on that. So I just want to make a comment, and I'm going to bring this up to council when a determination could be made. So this is just sort of a respectful prenotice that what's coming. Because I do want to... I did want to express this comment while the public was here, because I didn't think that the public had full opportunity to comment. So what I'd like to see, and if I could just make one comment here. The agenda came out, the agenda was closed, and then I've heard that there's no time to comment on the agenda items. So I would like to see a procedure where, if the agenda does come out, there is kind of a prenotice and perhaps where comments and could be put on, sort of like a Schedule A or something, and be available to not just council, but to all residents to peruse and just hear other residents' issues. So there's a myriad of ways that could be done. So I'm just going to leave it at that and approach council at a later time, just to see how we can get around this. It's probably an inadvertent shortcoming that can be addressed.
Elaine.
You know what? We do strive to make things open and transparent and engage with people. And you know, even in your workplaces, you know, somebody will tell you something, you go, "I didn't hear about that." And it happens, because we try to get the messages out as many ways as we can. So we're always looking to improve that. I do have to say, though, when you get the council agenda, when anybody gets it and they see it, there's an opportunity for public question. So you can send the public question. Will it get to you in time to be part of... I'm putting poor Fred on the spot here.
So the questions, of course, are read. If they're submitted online in advance, they're read at the next council meeting. What may not be able to do is, if they're submitted, to then be added as an agenda item. So they're available for question period. But if the agenda's been published, a public comment received between publishing and the actual meeting, that written comment, unless it's a question through the question, isn't added to the agenda.
The questions are only read at the meeting.
It's just read to council, but it's not an attachment. So there go, it's not a public document accessible after the fact.
Yeah, exactly.
So, Mark, Mono was the first municipality I was aware of to institute a public question period. And the reason I know was, that's one of my pride and joy accomplishments of the 1990s. I'm dating myself here. And our question period, unlike, say, Orangeville, is at the beginning of the meeting. It's not at the end of the meeting, where everybody's anxious to pack up and go home. If any of you see something on an agenda that gets, as I said, as we've said repeatedly, gets released the Thursday or at the latest, the Friday before the Tuesday meeting, and you want to make a comment about it or ask a question about it, you have two ways of doing it. One is to submit a question in writing to the clerk. And he's really good at coming in on the Tuesday morning with a list of questions received in that fashion. Or you can either appear online or in person and ask the question. So while the agenda is sort of... Has to be closed down for practical purposes at some point. It can't sort of remain open and fluid. Although, you know, we can always change our agenda if there is something that requires that at the beginning of the meeting. You still have that chance to intervene via question period.
Okay, but just if I could just comment. With respect to the noise bylaw exemption request, there was a number, I would say 10 or 11, submissions that were not even made available to all the residents. So I'm just wondering, and I'll take this up after, because I know this is... Is there a vehicle where, when the agenda comes out, that the residents, not just council, but all residents, would have access to public, you know, guest information?
Again, again, it requires curious people to get on the internet and see what's on that agenda, or subscribe to social media or some other mechanism. Because, as I say, that agenda is released to us and to the public at the very same time. And that hopefully is, you know, adequate. But again, as has been said, we may be able to do better. Thank you.
And I'll follow up on this later with council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to allow a few more questions and on different topics, if possible. And good morning again.
Hi, sorry, it's Sean Roberts. I asked a question earlier to the OPP. I just, I think I asked it incorrectly, where I was asking about unmarked vehicles. The question really should have been to subdued vehicles, meaning that OPP vehicles with... That are dark black with reflectors on them. To me, they don't deter crime or dangerous driving to the effect that a marked police vehicle, an open marked police vehicle would do. So just a quick question. Does the council, mayor, do you guys have any input on... No, the answer is no.
To the extent that we have a police services board, we can raise this as an issue. And it's a question of public visibility, and I think it's a good question. When you were asking it, I was thinking of those situations in the States where they get an old retired clunker, a police vehicle, and they simply park it at the side of the road. And it has that chilling effect on speeding. I know we haven't suggested that here, and I don't know what their response would be. But I'm certainly happy to advance the issue at our police services board when we get one established with the two other municipalities.
Yeah, like to deter crime and to deter dangerous driving and things of that nature. Like, I mean, I feel like we're masking our police force, where it's like, "Oh, there's no cops here," but there's police there. So, and especially if somebody is in distress, somebody needs a public service or law enforcement, where, you know, they're in a hidden vehicle, pretty much, unless you look in the right lighting, when they're parked on the side of the road or wherever they're parked. So that was just one of my questions. And I know, I'm not going to ask any questions about the Bruce Trail Conservatory thing. I just wanted to say that I think the Bruce Trail is fantastic. Mono itself is probably one of the most beautiful... Not probably, it is one of the most beautiful townships in the Greater Toronto Area. It's 100%, number one. And just one of the concerns earlier, it's not a question, it's just a statement. But somebody made a statement saying that we should have something in writing that this severance, where we're not going to sell part of that severance to a developer. I look at Orangeville, and Orangeville's looking uglier these days, where they're building some of these high rises and stuff. And, you know, this isn't to offend the gentleman from the Bruce Trail Conservatory. I think he was very, you know, articulate in the way he spoke. And same with council, I think you guys were and are great. But, you know, I can ask Elaine, you know, "Hey, why don't you hand me your keys and I'll go fix your car, and I can just go steal it and drive to, you know, Orangeville or somewhere else, Brampton or somewhere else, right?" Just because I'm giving my good word. And again, this is not to offend you. It's just more that for residents to feel more secure, I think we should have something in writing that, you know what? Like, "These are the good intentions. This is what we are going to do with the land. It's going to be protected. We're going to keep Mono a beautiful place. We're not going to turn it into the dump that Orangeville is starting to look like." And that's just really my comment.
If I can just make a comment. I don't think the Bruce Trail Conservancy fronts for the development industry. I mean, there's a 60-year track record there. And the other protection that I think we're missing is that much of the land in question is covered by the Niagara Skartment Commission. And they are very strict in terms of the rules vis-à-vis development, and especially in their super-protected zones. So we have the safeguard of that. But I think that if we ever got into a situation where, you know, and I just can't imagine it, Bruce Trail is trying to front for the development industry, I think the people you see at this table, and councillor Davy and deputy mayor Nix, we'd be the first people to be objecting very, very strongly.
Yeah, I don't, I do believe, like I said, they have a track record. The Bruce Trail, I don't see any high raises being built on the Bruce Trail. But I'm talking more of... I can have a... I've never stolen a car. Doesn't mean I can't steal Elaine's car just because she gives me her keys. And, you know, what I'm trying to say is that if that is the intention, let's put it in writing. So it's, so we all... Okay, wait, you know what? They have good intentions, and I do think you have good intentions, by the way. I'm not trying to say you're nefarious. But, you know, if those are the intentions, let's have it in writing so we don't have to have, you know, John Creelman or Elaine or Ralph or Melinda go, "You know, we object to you guys maybe doing something that we don't agree with with the land." If we put it in writing, it's there, it's permanent, and, you know, the town of Mono is protected and its residents.
I think you've made a point there. I just observed that somebody could come to the town of Mono and buy a piece of property with the intention of living on it, and then start using that property for an entirely contrary purpose. Dump, a tractor-trailer farm, whatever. You know, there are no guarantees in the business we're in, as it were. And all we can do is say that we have standards, and we enforce our bylaws, and we have expectations of organizations such as the Bruce Trail Conservancy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, may I just speak also? That, again, just to remind everybody that the Bruce Trail is a private entity that has purchased some property and needs to follow the rules. The issue at hand is that they want to sever off a portion of their property. And it's that portion of property, never mind what the Bruce Trail does with their property in the future. That's irrelevant, really. What the issue at hand is the severed piece of property. Severance by definition is development. That's the part that is up for, and that's why there needs to be a parkland levy against the severance severed lot. That's the part.
We will have a spirited debate on your notice of motion next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions on any other topic? Go ahead.
Good morning. Ken Nadle in Tenth Side Road. I have two quick comments. I had a lot to say, but in the spirit of everybody being exhausted, I shall not ask them. First comment to councillor Capes. Mentioned that this piece of property, the Bruce Trail, is not costing us anything. That's government speak. When you void a fee, it's in effect a subsidy. It is costing us something, and that goes to this... It is costing us something, and that goes to this council's freewheeling with our money. My second comment is, I ask you to enforce the fees, I ask you to pay your taxes, just like the rest of us, just like farmers, just like business owners, we all pay our taxes. There are penalties, yes. Pay them like everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other issues before I adjourn? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for that, and I, and I totally agree with you, thank you.
Hold up the mic.
Sorry, I, I have the mic.
There's no official photograph yet, I don't believe.
So, thank you for that comment, and I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. And what I meant by it's not costing us, it's not costing us to buy the hundreds of acres that they have purchased to create the trail on, and we don't have to maintain that trail, we don't have to spend tax dollars, money on that trail, because they're doing it. So, thank you for that.
Kirsten, did you have a question?
Not our. Kirsten Ball from Mono Centre, I know we're wrapping up, so I'll be quick, I just want to bring this to everyone's attention, especially because the Bruce Trail is here today.
Microphone.
Sorry, here we go. The, they're, they're doing a replanting of, or a planting, planting of some evergreen trees on the, what is it called, the Whitetail Reserve? Yeah, Whitetail Refuge, which is great, I agree with the theory behind that, because I believe it's to try and cool the stream that's going through there, because the fish need cooler waters. And I'm going to bring up something else that I know I've been voicing concern about for over 10 years, and that's the pollution going into the stream in Mono Centre, from all the runoff. The watershed of the whole village is running straight into that stream, and the, the springs are literally coming out of the hills and the rocks, right there. And, you know, within 500 feet, they're being polluted with all the oils and chemicals and salt and so on. And so, for years, I've been saying, this has got to be addressed. And last year, it was really bad. This year, it actually wasn't as bad. In the spring, you can really see the film and the sledge on the, on the surface of the stream, and I have to say, because this winter was so mild, I think it was greatly reduced, it looks way better than it has in previous years. But, my point is, is that I think it's the salt and the, and the runoff from the cars that is causing more damage to the streams, at least up in our, right at the headwater, where it's coming right out. That, in fact, that's probably be, doing more damage to the fish habitat than the warming of the water. I mean, I know, I know the warming of the water is a huge thing, and I'm just talking about a little microclimate. What was my, oh, so my point was, is there a way that, and I know that Mono Centre Road is a county road, so this is really a county issue, but there are other town roads.
You've got one county councillor here.
Yeah, and, but there are other roads in Mono that are probably experiencing the same thing. So, what I'm wondering, and I know you see this in the states a lot, is they do, they'll have a no-salt zone, and I'm wondering whether we can consider doing a no-salt zone, say, like 200 feet on either side of every stream or something. I know that sounds like, maybe it's complicated, but there's got to be a solution to all this stuff that we're putting right into the stream, where it's coming out of the, or out of the hill.
That's an interesting idea, and we'll, we'll pursue it for you. Are there any other pressing matters? We've gone almost an hour past our promised cutoff to facilitate the, the discussion, which has been very good and very beneficial. Any other issues going once? I have a public service announcement to make. Oh, sorry, Helga.
Maybe it has to do with the roads, I don't know. I live on the fourth line, and my streams fill the ponds on the next two or three properties, and then across the road, too. And the truck that fills up the water from the town pumps it, or sucks out the water into his truck to spray on the roads. I don't think it's just the flow into the truck.
You need to speak into the mic.
I don't think it's a flow into the truck, I think it's actively sucked out of the spring water. Is that a thing, like, I mean, isn't that private property?
It's probably the, the ponds at the third line and, and tenth?
No, no, it's on the fourth line.
Fourth line?
It's a running spring that comes down from my house, from my property, and goes into the making of several ponds, and then across the road, it also goes into a stream that goes across, and that's where the town is taking the, the spring water and filling its truck. Is that a usual thing, that it's, because it's actively pumped into the truck?
They do choose, they do choose locations where they, they feel that they're not impacting, say, a wetland, but we, we can look, look into that for you and get back.
So, it doesn't lower the water table?
Well, we don't, we don't, we don't want them impacting a, a wetland. And, you know, there's, there's places where there's a lot of water, and there's places where water is somewhat precious. But let's, let's look into it for you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a public service announcement to make on behalf of the Mono-Momer Citizens Coalition. On Sunday, April 28th, between 2:00 and 4:00 in the afternoon, they are hosting a workshop on Indigenous land-based practices, and that is at Menora Park Pavilion, 500 Menora Park Drive. So, I promise to make that announcement on their behalf. So, thank you very much, everyone. We've gone over our allotted time, but council's found this to be very, very useful, and I don't know if, if any of you have anything to, to add.
No closing remarks.
No closing remarks?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Yes, thank you so very much.